Thursday, December eighth, two thousand twenty-two. First order of business, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republics. First of all, I'd like to the recognition that Westwood Media Center, which is live streaming the meeting tonight and also recording it for later viewing on its platforms. And I want to thank Cornell Lynch and Melinda Garfield for all the work they do to make the meetings and Westwood meetings available to the public. First item of business is the superintendent's report. Emily?
Great, thank you. So I just have three brief items tonight. So first, I want to give you a quick update on the equity audit process. The consultant has now finished its data collection portion of the process, and they've given us a timeline, so we expect that we'll have a final report from them by mid-January. And unfortunately, I think that date will be after the January school committee meeting, so we will plan to discuss the results of the February school committee meeting. Secondly, I just want to mention that we-
We celebrated Inclusive Schools Week, but we are currently celebrating. Is that right? Yes, currently celebrating Inclusive Schools Week. And I had sent out some information to the community talking about all of the fantastic things that are happening across the district. And I wanted to show you a couple of pictures. So there was a common, a common read-aloud happening in elementary schools, a book called The Invisible Boy, and this is from Ms. Carpenter's first grade at the Sheen. They're engaged in that. This is actually a picture from the Hanlon School. We had a troupe of theater folks come in to do some performances with kids. At the middle school in the cafeteria, this is a student-led project, I think with the support of our new dean of students, Mr. Walker, and basically students contributed flags that represented their heritage. And so we intend this to kind of be a permanent display in the Thurston cafeteria. This is from the high school during S block. One of the possible things that students could participate in was a little mini lesson on American Sign Language. And you can see that the instructors here are students who are teaching some of their peers. So this is just a tiny little glimpse, but there's all kinds of things that were planned, and I thank everybody who really threw their energy into supporting, you know, such an important thing to celebrate our inclusive culture that we have here in Westwood. And I want to mention one other thing. This is kind of a strange picture, like, what is this? So this was a collaboration between middle school students and preschool, and basically they sort of gather donations and have put together gift baskets, and they're working with the Council on Aging to distribute them to senior citizens in town, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong? Oh, homebound. Okay, so about fifty baskets are going to be distributed. So we certainly thank those students for their, their efforts and their community-mindedness. Next, I just wanted to talk a little bit about some state-level advocacy that's, that's going on. So as you know, we are here in Westwood dealing with some significant budget challenges around special education, and that's not unique to Westwood. That's something that is impacting people across the state. And so the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, MASSS, is working and kind of advocating for some legislative relief that's related to these, you know, sort of dramatic increases in special education costs. And Allison and I attended a meeting with some superintendents and some folks from MASSS who work on advocacy. It's like the legislative arm of MASSS. And so here are some of the things I just want to tell you they're looking for. So we talked at the, the last meeting, or maybe it was in October, about the fact that OSD, the Operational Services Division, has told districts that we should project a fourteen percent increase in private special education out of district tuitions next year. And just to provide some context for that, so this is an annual notification that we get from OSD in October, and for the last twenty years, maybe it's been in the two-to-three percent range. So to get the letter in October and see fourteen percent kind of knocked us back on our heels. And so that's significant. We're sort of requesting some immediate pothole relief with respect to this, you know, suggesting maybe there's something to be done with state-level ARPA funds. I have to be honest, I'm not that optimistic that something's going to happen here, but I do think it is worth continuing to communicate what the impact of this is on districts. So that's sort of a short-term thing. And then in like a longer-term, a longer-term bucket is that really there are some asks that are coming from MASSS. And so we have communicated that we think that there should be consideration giving to increasing the reimbursement rate for circuit breaker. Circuit breaker is one of those things that we talk about a lot, but I just want to remind people what it is. So circuit breaker is a mechanism by which districts can submit for reimbursement for eligible special education costs. And these are really, so tuition costs that are at least four times the foundation budget. So these are very high out-of-district tuition costs. And we can submit for reimbursement, and right now, the reimbursement rate is seventy-five percent. So we might submit for some expenses we have this year, and then we would get that money in arrears. And so there's a suggestion coming from the superintendents to consider finding a mechanism to increase up to eighty-five percent, and to increase circuit breaker reimbursement to ninety percent for very high-cost tuitions over two-hundred-and-fifty K. So those are really residential placements that we're talking about. And then finally, to adjust the eligibility for circuit breaker cost to three times over the foundation budget, currently four times. So, you know, these are some things structurally that we think would be important, not just for the short term, but for the long term. So obviously, we're like staring down the precipice of FY twenty-four at this point. This isn't for FY twenty-four, but, you know, fingers crossed, maybe this is something that could be considered for FY twenty-five, and I think that it would really make a difference. And so I, I included in, in your packet, you know, it's sort of a group effort, and there are folks at MASSS who do this kind of advocacy work, but often what they do is ask superintendents, sort of as individuals, if we can advocate as well. So I have written letters to Representative McMurtry and to Senator Rush to talk specifically about what the impact of things like the fourteen percent projected increase is in Westwood, and to really put like real dollars on that, and to say like, this is how it impacts us, and here's the kind of relief that we've been looking for. So that's sort of one iron in the fire. And I also just wanted to add that MASSS is also advocating around the MSBA caps, given the rise in costs of construction. We've talked about this before. I mean, the construction costs have just like really, you know, risen in a dramatic way. And for some districts that are a little further behind us in the MSBA process, their projects are derailed, right? We luckily have figured out a way for now to, to weather that. But sort of looking at how high the bids were that came in in Westwood, I had been talking to some of my superintendent colleagues in other districts who had similar concerns, and we reached out to the, to the MASSS legislative advocate to say like, what, what could we be doing here? And so there is, you know, an effort again to have people who are in the process, who are experiencing it, to write to state legislators to try to say, here's what we're experiencing and what we need. MSBA just announced that they are going to temporarily suspend their accelerated repair program. We're in the core program, where you're actually building a building, accelerated repair or things like window replacements and whatnot. So they announced that, and that's to create more room in their annual allocation for core projects. And they said that they are reviewing program caps. We know firsthand that their caps are way off as compared to what actual construction costs are. And so, you know, it's good news, but not for us. So I feel like we gave it a shot, and we're helping out some other people with our advocacy, but it's really going to only apply to districts that haven't yet received their project's government budget approval, not us. So that's where we are with that, and that's it for me, for superintendent report.
Well, thank you, Emily.
The circuit breaker, is that a legislative or is that an executive branch decision?
Uh, no, I mean, I think it would be in the, the budget.
It'd be executive.
Yeah.
legislative, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. This next part of our meeting is the public comments. We welcome people to come and speak before us for three minutes. Identify yourself and where you live, and we don't respond to your comments at this time, but we do take them down and appreciate your calls. And is there anybody that would like to have a public comment at this stage? Please come up, have a seat right here at the front, and give us your name and address.
Oops. Right here? Right there. Okay. I am speak, oh, sorry. Eileen Siegel, two fifty-seven Alder Road. I'm speaking tonight to offer words of support in what I hope is empowerment to the school committee, specifically Tony and Maya and Emily. I'm very concerned that the teachers in Westwood are working without a contract. In the last sixteen months, I've been paying attention to and attending school committee meetings. Some of those meetings left me shocked at the narrow-mindedness of some residents and the way they spoke and the way they directed their expectations to the school committee. I felt very protective of you, and I felt very protective of our teachers. Superintendent Parks, I use my voice to advocate for teachers at office hours, and at both those office hours, you also spoke on behalf of these educators. I know you care about these teachers. I saw the email you sent the beginning of the school year to parents in regards to channels of communication. Thank you for being clear with your expectations to parents. Last year, one of the things I heard parents complaining about was the drop in MCAS scores. And these parents blame the drop in scores on the district having an inclusive agenda that is embracing diversity. I really hope those parents were listening at the school committee meeting when the two thousand twenty-two MCAS scores were presented. Chairman Donahue, you asked a great question when you asked what methodology or system was implemented to achieve such results, and the central office administrator, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, replied that it's the teachers. And let me say it again, it's the teachers. There's no way that these amazing results happen because teachers exclusively work their contracted hours, not for results like these. You have to collect data, analyze data, and plan again. It's a lot of time added to lesson planning and embedding target skills into existing curriculum, but the Westwood teachers did it, and look at the results they helped our children achieve. I have a unique perspective as a future Martha Jones mother who happens to be a public school educator in a neighboring town. I am concerned because I'm watching in my district and other districts that I've worked in before, dedicated and talented educators are walking away from the profession because they do not feel they are being recognized for their worth. I am exhausted myself, and the loss of my talented colleagues weighs heavily on us that are left. This is happening across all districts, and I know Westwood is feeling this because the same school committee meeting where MCAS scores were shared, it is also shared that the Westwood, the town of Westwood still hiring staff. That was in October, you might be fully stuck now. I'm asking that you shift your lens and give more. We need to keep the teachers we have. These people are not easily replaceable. If they need more prep time, give them more prep time. If they have done a great, they have done a great deal of professional development, give them the time to plan lessons and embed it in their teaching. Give them the time to collaborate with each other. If they want more money, give them more money. I believe the inflation rate went up eight percent last year. I know costs went up across the board for the district because again, at the meeting when the budget was presented, I saw that the increase in costs for the district. Being overly conservative with teacher salaries as a weighted balance budget is not in the best interest of our children. Costs went up for teachers as much as they did for the district. If they tell you they are drowning, reduce what you're asking from them. If you want them to do more, offer them choice and offer stipends. I will support whatever you need to do as a parent in this community to keep our school staff at the best. I think we already have the best. Please do what you need to do to keep them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like a public comment? I see nobody else. What we are going to announce too, we'll get more information out, we do have office hours. Two school committee members will sit there. People are welcome to come in, and we have an interaction. We talk back and forth, we give answers to questions, we do the best we can. The next office hours will be on January eleventh in the evening. We do in the morning and evening. This one is at seven, eight o'clock at night at the front of the school building, Professional Development Office. And so anybody interested, we can follow up on that, but we welcome people to come in for just discussions with the school committee members for that. What we will now move on is to a section called School Committee Chair Updates and Liaison Reports. I appreciate what just was said. We, we, with your help, we've been through a couple of tough years. Three years ago, the school committees were being asked to figure out what to do with COVID. There was no instruction from the federal government, there was no instruction from state, so we're trying to figure it out. And with your help, we're able to figure out how to do testing, how to follow up on kids who are positive, to support many of you. We did get a lot of public comments opposing a recommendation for masks until one of the students came forward and said, you know, we're happy at the high school to wear masks because our fellow students have at home parents and grandparents who are vulnerable. They have cancer, they have all kinds of problems. So we want to wear masks in case we get a problem, we're not passing it on to our friends. So the majority of our students came forward, it was just wonderful to see. We've also seen, what was just mentioned, national ranking of recovering from COVID. In the last analysis done of all of the states in the United States, they looked at fourth grade and fifth grade, fourth grade and eighth grade math, and of the fifty states, the state that came out the best, keeping up the scores very high in math, in the fourth grade, Massachusetts was second in the country, in the eighth grade, we're number one. At one of our last meetings, Allison Borchus, who has done a detailed analysis of Massachusetts, three hundred and fifty towns and cities, and Westwood ranked in the top five in, in the best statistics on the MCAS, not having lost ground. And the question that was asked, why did that happen? Where did this, what, what, what was the magic that allowed Westwood to do so well? And the answer was, it was you, the teachers, who are here tonight. So we do appreciate you, probably not enough, we don't express it enough, but we do, and the parents of this town also appreciate it. What I would like to do also is to formally thank Emily Parks, a former teacher, assistant principal, principal, assistant superintendent and superintendent, for over twenty-six years, I think, of service to Westwood. She's done a fantastic job for us, and I just wanted to formally thank you for being a wonderful leader and going through the details and educating us on what we need to know. Any other school committee members like to say something at this stage? Just to thank you, Emily.
Not yet. Still here.
Wait, wait, the roasting is coming. That's later.
Thank you, though, Charlie, thank you.
Everybody is welcome to the roasting. We'll be announcing a formal process that we will go through to look for a new superintendent. We will have committees set up to evaluate the prospects, ending up with interviews. That will be coming up and announced in the not-too-distant future. I would like to go to a school building project update here. Mayor.
Thanks, Charlie. We're going up, right? Steel is up. I think if you drive by the Hanlon, you'll see, I don't know what else to say. We are so far on, on schedule, on budget, and it's, it's starting to look like a building. So I encourage you to drive by and take a look.
Great. And I apologize, I was supposed to have nice photos that Maya sent me to show you that steel, but I don't have that tonight, so you'll have to imagine it for now. Great.
Well, I want to thank mayor and committee that you led through the last two years. I want to thank the school committee members who get up eight o'clock in the morning for every two weeks to be involved in a very detailed planning process, but it's a, it's a very difficult time also with steel. We're not sure if it's going to arrive and how much it's going to cost, and to keep these things close to being on budget, it's incredible. So thank you very much for that. Policy Review Subcommittee, Amanda.
Yes, so we met again yesterday and made a lot of progress. A couple of things I want to bring to your attention is the policy regarding idling out, out in front of schools. Charlie has done a lot of work on this in coming up with some suggestions to improve the policy to ultimately improve everyone's health, particularly the student's health. So more to come on that, but for the time being, we decided we're going to move forward with a educational campaign, and Harley was nice enough to put together a flyer to, you know, distribute amongst the community, just alerting people to the dangers of idling, excuse me, idling and, and how it can impact students' health. So that's one thing that will be coming up. And then the other thing I want to alert the committee to is the policy regarding private payment for tutoring. We realize we have to make some changes to that. Essentially, what's going on now is that students can be tutored in schools and pay tutor privately for that, and that's actually the conflicts with the state ethics law. So we need to change the policy so that it's not private paid tutoring, it's not happening on school property. So that's kind of a major change that we will be making as long as everybody's informed with that, but I think we have to comply with the ethics piece of it.
Thank you.
That is it.
I'm going to just pass around to the school committee meeting some of the things we shared, our policy on the motor vehicle idling issue. It's a very serious public health problem, causing asthma in kids. The EPA says a car should not be idling, waiting to pick up kids more than ten seconds, it should shut off. So we're going to start a campaign, education of parents, educate the family members with signs. It's very, very dangerous to have the, the toxic pollutants coming out of an exhaust waiting in line. So that's something we're going to be making a change in with the help, and I want to thank the leadership of Amanda on that committee that's reviewing a thousand pages of policy. The Extended Daycare Working Group.
Thanks, Charlie. So in, I think it was the September meeting, I proposed putting together a working group to take a look at the current extended day program. And so over the last few months, a group of us have been meeting to discuss the program and, you know, what the current state is. And a couple of weeks ago, also did pull together a survey. So tonight, we're just going to be going over some of the data and findings that we have. Lema is going to be presenting, and what we're hoping is just to kind of provide a preview this evening, and then we'll have further kind of recommendations for the school committee next month. It, I know that we're tied on time tonight, so if, what we thought we could do is if you could just hold questions until the end, and then we're happy to address them. I also just wanted to take a moment to thank both Lema and Michael Fagone for all of their hard work, putting together this deck and pulling together the, the survey data. It's a lot of time that goes well above and beyond their, their jobs. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll dive right in. So a quick glance at our agenda, so we're going to give you a brief overview of the program today, what's going well, what are the challenges today, the budget outlook, and a hint of some proposals to come, some things we've been discussing in the working group, and then we'll take questions. So extended day at a glance. Some people here might be familiar already, but just for others, it is currently four sites at all the elementary schools except Deerfield. Students take a bus from Deerfield to Hanlon. It is, the after-school program is three hours a day. On short Wednesdays, it's longer at six. We do have a before-school program, but most of the slides in this presentation are about the after-school program. The capacity is four hundred and fifty-five students in the after-school program, with a hundred and fourteen roughly at each site. The number does vary based on the interest and the capacity at each site. And then the waitlist is currently a hundred and twenty-three students. Programming is provided for four days during February and April breaks this year. Enrichment activities are organized on the short Wednesdays, and scholarships are available for families who meet the requirements. Extended day staff, so we've got a director based out of the Hanlon site, an assistant director based out of the Sheen site, three site coordinators, Hanlon, Donahue, MJ, two senior group leaders, these peoples also support, but are a little bit shorter days. And then the, the core staff that, you know, are working with our kids directly are thirty-one point six full-time equivalents, working fifteen hours as group leaders, fourteen high school students working also fifteen hours, fourteen FTE. So it takes more people than that to pull this off, so many of them only take a couple of days. So this is patched together with many people, but these are the FTEs. And then there's a nurse at the Hanlon site, and there are, new this year, there are no specialized IAs and limited support when necessary. So some insights about Westwood's program. So an important piece, as Dory alluded- So an important piece, as Dory alluded, we did, we conducted a survey. And honestly, Michael Fagone did a lot of work here to individually call districts and motivate them to respond to the survey in a short amount of time. So we conducted a survey with other programs in, in the region and received 25 responses with details about program design, staffing, budgeting, everything. Key insights from that, I'll share a lot of that data today. But key insights are that the capacity size and the, the size of enrollment per site and the waitlist size in Westwood is larger than most programs in our region. Staffing is in line with other programs. And an onsite nurse, which we have, is less common in other places. Behavioral staff are pretty critical for the other programs. And some have used staff who are specialists in behavioral support, meaning professional staff. This is more of the data. So 21 out of 25 of the programs that responded to our survey are run by the district. And ours certainly is run by the school district. In Westwood, there are 114 students per site, as I said. Then the average is closer to 80. Our capacity is 455. The average is about 313 to 320. The waitlist is 123 in Westwood. This one has a bigger range, but it's somewhere between 30 to 65. That's the average, whether you look at median or average. Hourly staff, 65% of our staff are daytime school employees. And that's true of other districts, too. The starting rate of pay for group leaders, so this is for adults in the Westwood program, is 16. That's if it's a college student, 19 if it's a college graduate. And then for other programs, sometimes starts a bit higher, but mostly not too far off. The highest rate of pay for group leaders in Westwood is 26. And the, that's higher than what we've seen in other programs. So that tends to be closer to 22 or 23. So that's where we are. And then the adult staff to student ratio is 14 to 1 in Westwood. This is again, adult staff, not including high schoolers. This is maybe one person higher than what we've seen outside, but we do have high school students as well supporting. So we're in line with other districts on staffing. Leadership, I just noted, I mean, we mentioned we have a director. I looked at whether all programs have assistant director. And four out of six of the programs who have over 400 students do have an assistant director that's program-wide and less building-focused and like looking at the whole thing. Nursing staff, as I said, five out of 25 programs provide an onsite nurse. So it's not very common. And then behavioral staff, that's more common. 14 out of 25 programs have behavioral staff. And two of them use professional staff. So that's the, that's the landscape. I'm showing you here some data ranked by the number of students per extended day site. So you see that that's the middle column. The number per site in Medfield is 117, Westwood is the second highest number. And then if you were to rank them by percent of district, like how many of these programs have a lot of students in their district, we're tied for second place there as well. At 16%. So that goes to our size. What's going well? We have high enrollment, we think that we've got user satisfaction. And, you know, nearly half of Westwood Elementary students are either enrolled or waitlisted. Student access to socialization and peers in their homeschool is really important. There's access for, to the program for Boston students that we specifically made sure that this was accessible in their schedule and via transportation accommodations. We have added a fourth site and that enabled us actually to add, to admit more students this year. There is no transportation required except for Deerfield. That certainly would go away with the Hanlon Deerfield business. And then we rolled out a new technology system this year. So we've gotten good feedback about that. The, the program continues to be affordable. So these are some of the strengths. We also have a lot of staffing strength. So first, the leadership of the program is committed and responsive, as I've heard from a lot of positive feedback from the community on that. And then several program and site leaders have worked for extended day for 10 to 24 years. So it, it is something, it's a testimony to their commitment. We have hourly group leaders who are familiar to the students and caregivers, which we've heard is important to families. We've moved faster than other programs in adjusting the pay for group leaders, I think. We did, the school committee made a big move on that last year in recalibrating the pay scale and adjusting to the market. There's a, we made a little reduction to the number of days of programming that we offer during school vacation weeks, but that has helped us do a better job of staffing up for the vacation weeks. It, it makes it more appealing to staff who need at least one day off during that time period. And we have capped enrollment on short Wednesdays, that did enable us to prioritize student safety. Lastly, I am noting that the full-time onsite nurse position, which was added last year, is, is also a strength that we've retained in FY '23. So staff pay rates, we commented on this before, but I just wanted to show you this graphically. So this is where we are relative to other programs in terms of staff pay rates. I think this one's ranked by the highest rate. We do have some that are paying more than we are, but two of those are privately-run programs. So as for challenges, we acknowledge registration opened unusually late this year and that was very tough for families. It was due to the rollout of a new enrollment system. And families who were waitlisted had little time to make other arrangements. So that was a challenge. The current waitlist of 123 students versus 53 last year, that's definitely a challenge. And then we, we know 18 out of those 33 that are waiting for an extra day are looking in particular for short Wednesdays. So these are realities. We did admit 30 students this month through new openings because some families dropped out. We've got new staff, combination of things that happened. And we, we have a theory that the waitlist is partly driven by a need for socialization for kids who may have missed out on that during the pandemic. Back very quickly to program size because this is part of the challenge. So I'm showing you the same data I showed you before. But I wanted to highlight here that the elementary school, the, the extended day program is currently already larger than any elementary school in Westwood. It's split over four buildings, but the enrollment is quite significant there. So with 455 students. During the school day, in our regular elementary schools, students are most typically in classrooms with cohorts of about 20 kids. At extended day, the model is different. So it's more typically 30 to 40 kids for the three-hour duration of the afternoon. And the program design being for socialization is, is intended that way. But post-COVID behavioral challenges have made that trickier than it is during the school day. More on program size. The program currently uses larger spaces, gymnasiums, cafeterias, libraries, art or music rooms, and outside playgrounds and fields. It doesn't usually use classrooms. Spreading out to other spaces like classrooms could change the feel of the program first, but also certainly impacts teacher prep for the, those schools where the program lives and the custodial cleaning schedule. So we've heard that teachers value the space in their rooms to prepare for the next day. Certainly custodians need a little bit of time to clean. And we thought about what happens after the Hanlon Deerfield opens. If divided into two locations after Hanlon Deerfield opens, the extended day program enrollment would be about 230 kids per site, which is twice the size of any program that responded to our survey. So we'd be really testing new ground if we did that. We, the alternative of retaining it with the current model of four locations, that does mean that we restrict availability of space to other groups that have asked us to use some of these spaces. So that's recreation or other town user groups that might want space in our gyms. So we have to turn them down because we have extended day programming in our buildings.
And Lemma, I think we had said the significance of that particular piece is that that offers an alternative for folks who do not have a space in the program.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, so currently, because we don't offer the space to these, to the Recreation Department, for example, we, the Recreation Department cannot offer an alternative option on short Wednesdays.
Exactly.
For operational challenges, the management of the program is really unique. And we, these are things that like, we've always known it as in central office, but it's just talking in the working group has helped us see it more clearly. So staffing for group leaders is a continuing hurdle. First of all, we know there's a market challenge, labor market challenge. But in extended day in particular, it's challenging because of the fact that a lot of the staff work, you know, hybrid schedules, only Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday. So the, the reality is for every day, the cohort of staff that is present there and the cohort of students is different. This is distinct from schools where usually the staff and the students are the same staff and the same students every day. So for the management of the program, this is a real challenge. It's also different each week because of short Wednesdays and the implications that that has on the staff's schedule. Many group leaders are permanent employees in the Westwood schools. That's a challenge because the highest enrollment demand is short Wednesdays. And it's also the day with the least available staff because we need them to attend PD. Some of the employees, when I say permanent employees during the day who have worked extended day are cafeteria workers, IAs, ABAs, teachers and building subs. These staff have variable hours sometimes. Sometimes we need them to provide home services, for example, or assist in an after-school activity and that may conflict with their extended day hours. And high school interns are not permitted to be alone with students. So that's not, not, not by the design of our program anyway. And therefore, that's not been the solution for us. So lastly, the program relies on significant support from central office, from HR for onboarding and hiring all staff, payroll, processing pay every two weeks, the business office for ordering materials and paying vendors and enrichment program delivery. So budget outlook. As a look back to where we were a year ago, the extended day program, as it closed 21, 22 school year, had a year close deficit of 20,000. That deficit would have been closer to 250,000 if there weren't a significant number of staffing vacancies. That was the big problem we faced in that year. As a correction, we both increased pay rates, but we also raised tuition from 320 to 342. And we anticipated bringing the program to a break-even budget. So budget update now. Extended day in last year, the enrollment was 400 students in the afternoon program. This year it's 455, so that's grown. But the average number of days has dropped from 3.5 to 3.25. Most of the losses have been Wednesdays and Fri, short Wednesdays and Fridays. The enrichment fee for short Wednesdays, we didn't have it last year. We tried, we were discussing adding it this year and we never actually implemented that. That has an impact of 36,000 on our budget. I just want to note, the enrollment and the average number of days changes, those impact revenue for the program. So I'm putting them here because the drop in the average number of days attended for students has had an impact on our revenue. So I'll get to that a little bit. The enrichment fee that we discussed but didn't assess also has an impact on like what we budgeted versus what is actual. And we did expand program leadership. We added one senior group leader. And we corrected salaries after having two years of a salary freeze for our director, assistant director and other site-based coordinators. So that led to a cost increase. In the operating budget last year, we accounted more accurately for custodial utility and accounting costs that are related to extended day. So that meant a cost of an additional 20,000. And there's been a growth in high school intern staffing. So overall, the impact of this is that currently there's an anticipated deficit of about 230,000 by the end of the school year. That's what I'm projecting. The deficit is driven by lower revenue by adding positions, both the senior group leader and the high schoolers, and overall cost increases. Revenue dropped by about almost 200,000, 195,000 due to the shift in enrollment. I cited that we cap short Wednesdays and Michael has told me that there's less demand for Friday enrollment. He's theorizing that it's because parents are able to swing a workday from home on Fridays. So after deducting prepaid tuition and refunds, I've looked at the balance in our account. I've looked at where we started this year and the available funds to address this deficit. And I do identify 135,000 that we have that we can use to cover part of this deficit. The other part, we don't really have a solution for right now. So we, we might just close the year with a deficit in extended day. So what to anticipate from us? First, after like a lot of discussion on the program's strengths and challenges, we would make some, we're discussing some recommendations around staffing. So I think there's still some talk that needs to happen about this. But we're looking at potentially behavioral support positions. It's not clear what design that would be, but maybe, could be two ABAs, could be a BCBA that provides services to the sites. We're looking at leadership support with experience, school-based supervisory experience and skill in providing professional development and managing the budget. So what I mean there is, we're trying to think of ways of adding support to our current structure, which is Michael and his assistant director. But doing that to reflect some of the work that I've been doing to support budget in extended day, or Allison has been doing on the HR side, and really concentrating that support in one person. So that would be the proposed change there. Then we're also looking at relying on first, staff first aid training and actually, after having, potentially having extended day staff, use that training in place of having a nurse, full-time nurse onsite. So that's another option. We have discussed some changes to reduce the impact of extended day on the central office or Westwood Public Schools' operating budget. One is to modify the budget and account for operational impact on the Westwood schools by increasing the offset to capture some demands. Could be for onboarding, payroll, accounts payable, student services, all of these other services that are provided by.
I'm going to interrupt you for one second, Lemma. So I just want to clarify because I think some folks may not understand this. So financially, extended day needs to be self-sustaining, right? So this is not related to our operating budgets. And so it's revenue in and then it's money out for expenses. And that's why we try to balance it, right? And so one of the important things to think about here is what are the, the real and lived impacts of running the extended day program on people whose salaries are paid by the operating budget? And to account for that, to not do so means that the operating budget is effectively subsidizing extended day, which is a day career program that is supposed to be self-sustaining, right? And so that has to do with the offset. If we can take revenue from extended day and apply it as an offset to our operating budget, that's how we would be able to manage that. So I just wanted to clarify that. And whereas Lemma said we might end up with a deficit in extended day, just to be clear, we can't do that at our operating budgets, right? That's a situation that's unique to extended day. And I would add that.
And it's not even recommended.
It's not recommended there either.
Not end the year with a deficit, I have to say. But, you know, it certainly is not possible in the operating budget. So I have to close the year on budget.
Okay.
Yep, no, thank you for adding that. So in terms of other, other budget revisions, we recommend adding a line item in the budget for equipment expenses. So this is again, an example of a place where the district has funded some things that, because we didn't budget for them explicitly in extended day. That's replacement of printers, walkie-talkies, iPads for check-in and checkout. And lastly, most importantly, raising tuition to match the market rate. So I'll, I'll speak a little bit more to that as we close. But those are some of the things we have discussed in the working group. They would be, we will continue to discuss them. And then when we come back and make our recommendations, they're on budget. You will see us proposing something that can, that we can afford so that we can afford implementing some of these recommendations. We have heard a lot from families about waitlist concerns and we have some strategies for mitigating some of those. One is certainly to open the program enrollment early in spring 2023 so that families can pursue other options if there are insufficient spots. And capping the size of the waitlist at 50 families or a number in that range that would be, you know, that we could realistically admit during the course of the year. We would like to also evaluate the feasibility of increasing the cap on short Wednesday enrollment in light of space and staffing constraints. So we certainly have to do that safely, but we would look at maintaining, maintaining the program integrity and safety. We think about rich programming, we think about field trips. And we would potentially increase the enrichment fee for short Wednesdays. Not only implement it, but increase it. And then evaluate program size. I am interested in getting together with Michael and talking to other districts to see whether there are some best practices that allow for having strong programming in spite of really large enrollment. So we want to talk to other districts that are big, like us, especially those that have a lot of students at one site. And that might be a good next step. Going to tuition, I alluded to the fact that the, the average in the market is closer to 470. And this is where Westwood is currently of tuition, we're at 342. And you can see in this chart that a good number of the programs have recently increased their tuition. Norwood is noteworthy because they're our neighbor and they were right next to us in one of my previous presentations to the school committee. And they've jumped right up to one of, being one of the top programs in terms of what they're charging. and they've jumped right up to being one of the top programs in terms of what they're charging. So that was a big change.
They also had start time change, right? That they, the elementary starts a lot earlier. I guess they're anticipating big demand increase.
That I talked to Dave, that is, that is a factor.
Yeah. So, next steps for us are to present, we think, two options for an FY24 tuition rate increase. We will try to give you two proposals to address some of the staffing changes that we might recommend for the program, and also to address the budget shortfall.
Thank you, Lema. Any questions in the school committee?
We had talked a couple of years ago about looking to outsource extended day. Is that something that the subcommittee looked at?
I think we looked at it in the sense that we conducted the survey to see what other districts were doing, and really found that overwhelmingly, the majority of the District 21 out of 25 who responded are.
Running them in-house.
Running them in-house. And not only that, employ a high percentage of their kind of, their daytime staff.
Yep.
And so it's an, it's an extra source of employment for a large number of, of folks. So, and it, it felt like that was really appreciated by the families as well.
Yeah, that was a huge point for the families.
Yeah.
I think at the bottom line, this has to be self-sustaining. We are having a tough enough time with the operating budget as it is, so I don't think anyone would disagree with me that the operating budget should be, should absolutely not be subsidizing extended day. Do we know what, I know there's a lot of assumptions in this, but do we know what that magic tuition number is to get us to balance? Or is that something you're going to present in January?
I think one of the challenges is that we may want to invest in staffing or change our staffing model, so that will affect what tuition number we really want to balance. But we, I think we could be, like, if we didn't do any additions to staffing, we certainly could be balanced at 440. You could get there at 440. But we think there's a need for more, for adjustment to the staffing model. We think there are really needs in the program, and, and that's what we'd like to do as well.
440 is still on the low end, it looks like.
Yeah, and I mean, that may speak to the fact that there are more supports that other programs are providing that we're just not providing. And so we feel the strain in central office and like keeping this program afloat because we're not providing the sufficient supports in terms of district, you know, leadership, as well as sometimes the, the mechanical pieces, right? Payroll management and the sort of.
Right.
Do you, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm done.
Thanks. Do you guys have a sense why our utilization rate is higher? Is it just because our rates are lower, so people who are looking primarily?
It's a bargain, Amanda, that's what I think, yeah.
So along those lines, like, do you, does Michael have a sense of the number of students who are attending or going like for socialization because it's a bargain? Or because there's a true childcare need, like, is, is there any survey?
Yeah, I don't think that he has like a, I don't think anybody has like a true number on that. But, I mean, one of the things that we, we had two theories when we were talking about, why did the, why is the waitlist like, what, more than double now? What it was last year, right? And we did think part of it was the loss of socialization during COVID. Perhaps, you know, caregiver schedules have changed, maybe more folks are going into the office now than they were, you know, before. And I'm talking about younger students who may not have used the program earlier on. But then, yeah, it's, it's inexpensive. And there aren't any other options that are available kind of immediately in town because the schools are all being used. So, it's a kind of a confluence of a couple of things.
Then the people who are using it primarily for socialization may not, not saying that that isn't important, but maybe there would be other avenues to achieve that.
Or we could hire staff onsite who could more, you know, could, could accommodate kind of some of the behavioral issues that we're seeing, could provide, you know, would have more time to put in some of this enrichment program that we're thinking about. But just right now, there is not the bandwidth to do any of that, because it's in such high demand.
I think it is an important point though, Amanda. I mean, there, there may be some point at which if you raise the rates, right? You start to lose people, and so there, there is some pivot point where like to have the amount of revenue generated by the tuition cover the cost of the program, you know, you, you have to sort of think both about rate and the numbers and how those might interact. But I do think that our, our current rates are so far below market. You know, I can't imagine that that many people would jump ship because, you know, it's really important for folks to have access to extended day, so.
Any two?
Just quickly, about the nurse, what, when did we add the nurse and why? It's just like, we're one of the only programs that have it.
I think we've had a nurse at least part-time for a while, for several years, but we increased it to a full-time last year. And it's, it made some sense, both because of student need, but also because we needed more nurse support in the district. So there was some alignment in schedules that was convenient and it made sense. So we patched together, like, we added hours, we were able to have more of a nurse covering the district in the middle of the day, but also pairing, pairing that with hours per extended day.
The revenue change, let me make sure I understand that, because I was, so $200,000 is less than expected because enrollment, enrollment is lower than what we thought, what, what was over there a few years ago? I'm trying to understand both. I understood, yeah, maybe I understood the two parts.
We, we projected some of the, we projected spaces for the waitlist, so we anticipated that we'd go to 455, first of all. But, but we didn't anticipate the number, the drop in the number of days attended.
So basically, people went from average of four to average of, whatever the number is, because the Friday, the Friday expect, or whatever.
And Wednesdays, and we cap short Wednesdays.
Got it, yep, okay. The other, I, I know this would make administrative, I think about creative pricing options as well beyond kind of the increase. In other words, if there's, if the demand is for Wednesdays, you could charge an extra, extra fee, you know, do things, I don't know. I don't know overcomplicate, I know it's like.
We've talked about that, short Wednesday surcharge or something.
Yeah, right, right. You think about airlines, it's more, you know, there's some place more than us. I don't know. It may be more work, but it may be something you can think about.
We are thinking about that, and like with a lot of the things here, it's, a lot of times, Michael and I joke, like, my constant refrain to him is like, keep things simple, keep it simple. So we've done that because it's such a complex program, we don't really have enough support to run it. But yes, that would be a complexity, but if we also add enough support for the program, maybe they can manage that. Surcharge, like, surge charging on short Wednesdays.
Well, I want to thank you guys obviously for your, all your work, Dorian. This is thank, this has been, I know, been talking about this a while, but.
Michael put in a ton of work too. I don't want to underscore, I, he really did, it has been.
It wasn't easy to get those survey responses.
Yes.
To the extent you're looking for any direction, at least for me, I would say you should put the program in place that you think works best, and then look at the numbers from there, right? So, and then see what the, what the tuition should be from there, because I do think getting the program right with the right support, both for the kids and for the staff, is, is really important. And then we can, you know, sort of see how the numbers play out that way. That would be my recommendation.
Any other questions? Dori, thank you. Lema, thanks very much.
Thank you, Lema.
Appreciate it. Moving on here, our next is the update on collective bargaining.
Oh, yes. So, as the school committee knows, the school committee decided to file for mediation with the Labor Relations Board. So, as you know, we've been in contract negotiations with the WTA since last February. We did previously reach two tentative agreements between our bargaining team and the WTA's bargaining team. Both of those agreements were voted down by the membership. We did come back to the, to the negotiating table in the fall, and, you know, given sort of how those things proceeded, we ultimately determined that we think the most sort of productive and effective and frankly respectful way to continue in the process is to get some help from, from a mediator who can provide sort of a neutral third-party perspective. So, we did file, and things are actually moving quite quickly. We have been assigned a mediator, and now we're working with the WTA's team to identify some dates to give to the mediator to schedule our first mediation session. So, hopefully that will be moving forward quickly.
Any questions?
What's the approximate timeframe, like what dates or is there a range?
So the requirement is that we have to provide three potential dates for the first session, and that those dates have to be within the next 45 days, and we've been working to try to get them sooner than that, to keep things moving.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. The, we move on to the discussion items here, the development of the 24 budget.
Okay.
Emily?
Yeah, thank you. So, there are several things that I want to do tonight, and I, I feel like I need to say in advance to the committee, this is a longer presentation than I usually give. I tried to get it shorter, but I, I did not succeed. So, we have some things to talk about in terms of budget development, and I put up here the budget development timeline. The budget process goes on all year, of course. But sort of our next milestone that we're trying to achieve is in January, when I need to present my proposed budget to the school committee. And so, what I want to do is really have kind of an in-depth conversation about budget tonight. And the reason for that is that we really are facing some very unique challenges in the FY24 budget development process. And so, what I need to do is kind of update the school committee on where we are in our analysis of what our situation is in the FY24 budget. And what I hope is the outcome for tonight is that I'll get a directional sense from the school committee about how you want us to approach the development of the budget. We really think that we need to come in higher than we've come in in the past, and I need to get a sense of how much higher. And that will sort of influence how we think about coming at what is right now, you know, a situation where we have to make some reductions in some way in, in order to present a reasonable budget. So I will say that my, my presentation tonight is designed to provide sort of some context and information about the backdrop of the things that drive the budget development process. I've also gotten feedback from the school committee in the past that we educators like to use a lot of jargon and acronyms, and you've asked me to avoid that. And so, some of it is just to make sure we're all using the same vocabulary about some of these things. And then, because I think it is likely that the proposed budget that I present in January will be a larger increase than I've ever proposed, you know, I do think we may be getting some questions about that. You will get questions from your constituents, and so I want to make sure that, you know, all these factors are really clear to you so that you can talk with the public about it. I will certainly get questions, and so I want to make sure we're kind of on the same page about that. So that is the plan for this evening. So, if I sort of talk about like my learning outcomes for this presentation, there are really a couple of things I want to talk about. So, in terms of this context, I want to talk about different funding sources and what the backdrop is for this. And there are really two major categories. So I want to talk about tax revenue, and specifically thinking about Prop 2.5 and how that impacts towns and schools. I want to talk about how Westwood incorporates new growth into its budget. And then I get a lot of questions, and frankly, I hear a lot of assertions, oops, I don't know what's going on here. I hear a lot of assertions about university station that sort of reveal a misunderstanding about some things. And so I want to talk about that, how it impacts our budget today. So that's about taxes. And then the second thing is that many things go into our budget, taxes being by far the biggest variable. But I want to talk about other kinds of revenue that we have. And so, I'm calling this restricted variable or one-time funds. So we'll talk a little bit about Chapter 70 state aid, grants, offsets, and revolving funds, things like fees, ESSER funds, that's the federal COVID relief, operating versus capital spending, and specifically in Westwood, the meals and hotels tax, okay? So if you can kind of hang on to those two big ideas, tax revenue and then restricted funds, that's what we're going to be talking about. Okay, so, why are we doing this tonight? As I said, FY24 is proving to be, proving to be a very challenging year, and we've talked about these before, but just to review. So we're facing increased costs due to inflationary pressures, I think. Everybody is experiencing that in their life. To give some specifics to this, what we're talking about, our heating fuel costs in the district are seeing a 15% increase year over year from last year. That's real numbers that we're looking at currently. We are in year one of a new three-year bus contract. Our transportation contract for the yellow buses went up 7.43% this year. When we were budgeting last year, so that would have been like at this time last year, where we did not, none of us foresaw what was about to happen, right, with the economy. We budgeted for 3%, which was a very reasonable assumption at that time. So we've got sort of a hole this year. We also know that year two of our contract is another, like an additional 7% increase in FY24. FY25 is more reasonable, I think it's back down to about 3%. The transportation, I don't know why my technology keeps going, is it my dongle? Okay. The transportation contracts, those are vans, similarly, we have a 10% increase in that. We were up to renegotiate that contract. The numbers that were coming at us were so high in that we said, we'll take a one-year deal, and then we'll go to the market and see if we can do better. Market's not appeared to have improved, so we'll see where we get with that. So those are real felt costs. We also have talked about the fact we have significantly increased costs in special education due to a couple of things. So we had four students who moved in, moved to Westwood over the summer. They brought with them IEPs for out-of-district placements. We are responsible for those tuitions, and so those obviously were not things that we budgeted for. As I mentioned before, OSD has put districts on notice that we should expect a 14% increase in private out-of-district tuitions in FY24. We've looked at those numbers for Westwood, that for us would be about 300K, $300,000. And then we have unknown salary increases. So we have unsettled, we have an unsettled teacher's contract, we're currently in negotiations with our IAs. This is really significant in terms of the budget because the operating budget for the school district, 85% of the total budget goes to salaries. So that unknown is a very big driver as we think about developing the budget. And, you know, therefore, in developing our budget in order to meet the budget deadlines, some of which are required by town charter, we just have to make assumptions about where we will land. And so, we have, to be clear, we have to make assumptions about FY23 and about FY24 because of course increases for FY24 compound from FY23, right? So those things are tied. So just to kind of underscore this again, if we look at the, where we spend our money, the budget categories, here's how it, it comes out. So, as I said, about 85%, the big green wedge, goes to salaries, which really makes sense. Schools are people-driven organizations, right? It is about the interaction between adults and kids, and so that is our primary focus here. You can see that about 6.5% goes to non-salary things, instructional supplies and whatnot, 4% to operations, and 4% to special education. And I want to underscore that this distribution is a very typical distribution for a public school district. That's about what you see. So I kind of want to move the lens back now from not just the school operating budget, but look at the towns, right? Because our budget is related to some of these things. So, most of the expenditures in Westwood and town are for operating budgets and for other fixed costs and benefits. So you can see that here, the blue pie wedge, which is 67% of the FY23 expenditure in the budget, is for operating budgets, right? So things like salaries. The next biggest wedge of the pie there, the yellow, 18% is for fixed costs and benefits. And so, I need to be clear that our operating budget doesn't include shared costs that are to pay for health benefits, for instance, right? For people, the town's contribution to the healthcare premiums. That's a really, it's, it's a really volatile number too, right? So that is sort of hard to, to estimate sometimes in budgeting. If you look at the green wedge, 6%, so that is related to sort of some other, to capital expenses, and then also to, to some other expenses here. And specifically, it's, it's related to things like the OPEB liability, sorry. Is that back on up there? Yes, okay. So OPEB, there's an acronym that we throw around, right? So OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. You know, so this is like a unique challenge for the public sector. So those of us who work in the public sector, you know, we accrue benefits over the course of our career, but we delay taking them, right, until we. but we delay taking them, right, until we retire. And so, for example, you know, when people retire out of Westwood, the town continues to contribute its portion of paying for that individual's healthcare premium throughout their retirement, right? And so that's referred to as the OPEB liability. But effectively, like, they know that in the future, there will be these costs. And this has been a big topic of conversation in Massachusetts. Several years ago, there was some legislation around this. And basically municipalities were required to establish like a trust fund and to have a strategy for accumulating a trust such that that OPEB liability would be taken care of, right? And, you know, I have to say that the town of Westwood, it has really sound financial policies, and they went after that. And over the past, you know, 10 years or so, have done a really impressive job at funding that OPEB liability. So they're almost at the target, right? And will be at the target in that trust fund soon, which will benefit us. So that's like the expenditure categories. And then we have to look at, well, how are those things paid for? So we look at revenue in Westwood, and not surprisingly, most of the revenue in Westwood comes from local taxes, right? So 80% of the revenue here is from local taxes. Again, in sort of a suburban community in Massachusetts, that's pretty typical here. But there are some other sources here. And the next biggest one that I want to point to is state aid. That's about 6%, right? And most of the state aid in Westwood is Chapter 70 money. Chapter 70 money is state aid that's specifically for K-12, right? It doesn't come directly to us. It flows through the town. But if we think about that state aid, if that 6%, let's say it's like $7 million, you know, $6 million of the $7 million is Chapter 70, Chapter 70 money. And so if you looked in some other communities that are like not exactly similar to Westwood, you might see that state aid is a much bigger piece of that pie, right? But here, it's mainly local taxes.
Because that's the formula?
Because that's the Chapter 70 formula. Exactly. I think I'm about to get into that, right? So state aid, thank you for queuing up that question. So if we think about state aid, like, what is Chapter 70? And how does it impact the Westwood public schools' budget? So Chapter 70 is the primary way that the state distributes funding to K-12 schools in Massachusetts. And it's based on a formula. And the formula is designed to ensure that every school district has sufficient resources to provide, and this is the term, an adequate education to students, right? So that's like the floor. It takes into account the ability of a local government to contribute, right? And that's based on things like median income and property values and whatnot. So the formula is designed to have an equalizing effect. Less affluent communities get more state aid, right? That's how it works. So in our budget process, the town can estimate potential Chapter 70 increases during the budgeting process. The problem is, is that that information is very limited. It doesn't work well with our timeline in terms of developing a municipal budget. And so we really look at the governor's proposed budget for the Chapter 70 estimates. The governor's proposed budget comes out in late January. This year, with the new administration, the new governor has given a five-week extension, so it may not be until February. And increases in Chapter 70 are highly variable from year to year. So, you know, a couple of years ago, our increase, you know, we get about $6 million in total, I think. Our increase was $47,000. I mean, that's pretty much level funded, right? And then another year, it was like $240,000. And so it really changes. It's kind of an uncertain thing. It doesn't go down statistically. It could, though, because the formula is tied to enrollment, right? So that's kind of interesting as well. Okay. So let's sort of take a dive into local property tax revenue because this is actually really important in terms of we think about what we can do here. So first, I want to talk about what Prop 2.5 is. And people are probably familiar with this, but thought of there's repeating, and how it impacts municipal and therefore school budgets by extension. Okay. So in Massachusetts, there are limits on how much a municipality can raise taxes each year. And so that's Prop 2.5. So Prop 2.5 is a calculation of the maximum tax that a community can levy, and that's called the levy limit. And there are really two things here. So there's an increase limit. So under Prop 2.5, the annual increase of property tax in the whole town cannot exceed 2.5%. It can't be more than a 2.5% increase, asterisk, with the exception for new growth. And we'll talk about that in a second.
And that's an aggregate 2.5?
That is an aggregate. So that's not an individual's tax bill, right? An individual's tax bill is impacted by other things, assessed value, tax rates, all that, right? But it just means that the town of Westwood can't collect from residents in property taxes more than, 2.5% more than they did before, okay? And then there's also something that's called the ceiling. So the total annual property tax revenue raised by a municipality can't exceed 2.5% of the assessed value of all taxable property contained in it, okay? For our purposes, the increase limit is the thing that we really need to focus on. Okay. So there is one way to do that, and that's through a proposition 2.5 override. So an override is a vote by the community to exceed the limits of Prop 2.5. And so there are rules around this. The ballot question has to state a specific dollar amount, and it has to state the purpose for the override. So overrides really only happen because there is a particular need. It's not really because there's like some desire, right, or a wish. It's kind of a big deal to do an override. There are three kinds of overrides. The first kind of override is an operational override, right? And so an operational override is a vote to permanently increase the tax levy. The residents in the community say, "We will raise our taxes this year by more than 2.5%." And they specify what that is, knowing that that will forever increase the levy limit in town. I say this to say, it is a big deal to do an operational override. Okay. So that's the first kind. And so you do that for significant things that happen, big changes in enrollments or program changes or things like that. The second kind of override is called a debt exclusion, and that's a tax increase for the purpose of raising funds to pay for debt service, to borrow, okay? The tax increase is temporary and lasts only until the debt is paid off. So that's how municipalities pay for major capital investments, like a school building project, right? And so that's what we did last fall. We had a special town meeting for the Hanlon Deerfield project, and we asked people to do an override vote so that the town could issue a bond and pay for this building.
You mean a debt exclusion?
A debt exclusion, a debt exclusion vote, yes, sorry. And so that we could pay for this building. So I think this is probably obvious, right? But I mean, to pay for a building. It's sort of like when you buy a house. Most people don't have enough cash on hand to just go out and buy a house. I hear there are some. I'm not one of them. And so instead, they've taken up a mortgage, right? And they have to pay for it over time with interest. That's what a debt exclusion is, and so that's how we pay for buildings. So 20 years ago, in Westwood, we did a debt exclusion to pay for the current high school, right? The residents of Westwood voted to increase their taxes to pay for the high school, and they've been paying for the high school for 20 years. This is year 20, FY23. We're like paying it off and like, you know, I don't know if you get the title or what. But, you know, we, so we have that building at this point. And that was sort of good news when we went out for the debt exclusion for Hanlon Deerfield because we were able to tell residents, "The debt's falling off. You're paying off one building. Time to start paying for another building." And it was in no way an equal swap because the way the debt was structured for the high school, which I won't get into it, but the payments were structured so that they decreased. The Hanlon Deerfield, it's even payments for 30 years, okay? So the residents of Westwood agreed to increase their taxes for the next 30 years. And when 30 years is over, that increase will go away. Something else will probably come in, right? Okay. And then, yeah. And then we have a third kind of override. It's a capital outlay expenditure exclusion. So that's a tax increase for the purpose of raising funds for a specific capital cost, like, so sort of one big thing. We kind of don't have the cash on hand, right? But again, it's a temporary increase, temporary. Okay. So here's a chart that you, if you watch Select Board and FinCom, as I do, right? And have watched over time, this is a chart that the town finance director puts up year after year after year. And it's a really critical chart, and I'm going to do my best to explain it. I've practiced several times because I didn't do so well my first couple of tries. All right. So what I want people to do is only look at what's above that blue line in the middle. Ignore the bottom for now. We'll get into that, but it confuses things. Okay. I'm also going to use this fancy laser pointer that I learned how to use. Okay. So let's start by looking at FY22, okay? So that's like last year, okay? Because that, and this is an important thing on this chart, these years are completed. So all of these numbers are like real, actual numbers, right? Starting to get everything. Okay. This column, the budget for FY23, is not yet actual, right? So this is what we were talking about at this time last year. All right. So we're going to start here in FY22, right? And so here's how you calculate things. You take the prior year's levy limit. In this case, you can see here, it was $83 million and change. You add 2.5% to that, right? And then you can add in above and beyond the 2.5% for new growth tax revenue. New growth means actual construction, right? And so if there's actual construction going, you can say, well, that's going to generate more revenue that we didn't have before, and you can add something in for new growth, right? If you had had a general operational override, remember, we said that permanently impacts the tax levy. You would add it here. We didn't. You add it all up, and you get the tax levy. So $86.7 million was the tax levy limit FY22, okay? And then you can kind of like start again, right? Move on to the next column and do that. Now, it's a little more complicated because you remember, we said there's exempt debt, right? There's, there, people have agreed to raise their taxes in addition to that for a temporary period of time. So that's where we get to the bottom part of the chart. You actually have to layer in the exempt debt. And then you add that in, and that's called the levy capacity. That's what the town could tax up to, okay? And so I'm going to come back to this in a second, but I first want to look at the budget. I think I put animations in here? I don't know what I was thinking. Yes, okay. So when we go in the budgeting process, and when I say "we," it's not really "we." This is all done at the town side, right? So you take the prior year's levy limit, and that becomes your new floor. So in FY23, that's what happened. And then they add it in, 2.5%. But at this stage of things, you don't know what the new growth is, right? And so in the budgeting process, you have to estimate new growth. And that isn't just like whistling into the dark. I mean, there are town assessors who are paying attention to what's happening with construction in town and whatnot. And so they work with the finance director to determine what the estimate will be in here for new growth. The town of Westwood takes a, I think, very prudent and conservative financial approach here, and this is part of their policies, right? They want to have stable budgets that allow for sort of steady growth and increase and aren't sort of like, you know, going up and down all over the place because that kind of instability is really difficult to manage. And so when they do this new growth estimate during the budget process, they estimate conservatively for this, right? And I think you can imagine why because if you go too high on this estimate and you're wrong, you have a big problem, right? The actual new growth number is not certified until the following November, right? So the new growth number for FY23 was just certified by the state a couple of weeks ago in November. By the time you get that number, you're almost halfway through your fiscal year. So if you overestimate it, you would then have to deal with that in some way, right? That could be to like make reductions mid-year, which clearly would be grim, or to use some kind of stabilization fund to plug the hole for this fiscal year. But then you've got a problem going forward because you've created a hole, and now you have to figure out a way to make up that money going forward. So here's what happened in FY23. Here's the prior year's levy limit, plus 2.5. They estimated the growth at $550,000. That gives us the new, the tax levy limit. Layer on the exempt debt. And so the number was, what could the town tax? $90.4 million, $90,495,848. And so the budgets that went to town meeting, and what actually happened is that they decided to tax $90,335,810. So they left $160,000 of unused tax levy on there. And, you know, in the scope of $90 million, $160,000 is shaving it pretty close, right? Okay. So that's sort of the budget. I want to point out a couple of things because this is, I think, something that people really misunderstand at times. This money that says unused tax levy, and I'll talk more about that in a second, these are not actual dollars that exist anywhere, right? That's unused levy. Those are taxes that were not raised. It's like potentially money that could be generated going forward, but it's not like this money exists in an account somewhere, right? That's still out in the pockets of residents because it wasn't levied, okay? So what you're probably noticing here is that this unused tax levy for FY23, that number looks a lot lower than these numbers and that these numbers vary from year to year, right? Like, there's no sort of linear thing, or no linear like this, right, if it were the same constant. And so why is that? Well, that is because of the way that the new growth is budgeted for and specifically when the new growth is incorporated, okay? So I'm going to move forward. So now what we've done is we've added another year, okay? So now FY23, I told you, the new growth revenue was certified in November. So now we actually know what it is. And you can see what has happened on this chart. So now this number, which was $550,000 in the estimate, has changed because the new growth came in. And so that's the actual number now. And you can see that that new growth has in fact been incorporated into the tax levy limit, right? It's not left on the table. We take it now, and then it becomes the basis for the FY24 budget, right? But in the budgeting process, we don't take it on the chart until it's real, right? And so it's a matter of timing. When do you take it? Because if you take it too soon, when it's not real yet and you're wrong, that would just be a rookie mistake, right? You would have a budget problem that you could have avoided at that point.
Well, you do take it. You just take a very low number.
Oh, yeah, you take a low number, exactly. You take it, you take a very conservative number. Exactly. So, so if we do, we look here, this is what's happened in FY twenty-three. The tax levy limit now, we know, is ninety million. We layer in the exempt debt. Here's the levy capacity, ninety million, four hundred and ninety-five. We said we actually taxed this. And so the excess levy, taxes that weren't raised, is seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And that's actually really interesting to me. I mean, frankly, it's not great news. When, in the sense that when I look at this, you know, if you had, if you'd used the prior year to estimate, to estimate and said, oh, let's go for like a million, you would have been off, right? I mean, there isn't necessarily a relationship here, and that's because like new growth and construction varies from year to year. So where we are in the FY twenty-four budget process, and again, I say we, it's the town. I watched the finance director's presentation at Select Board on Monday. The new growth has been certified, it's been incorporated into the tax levy limit. It's the new basis for FY twenty-four. Add two and a half. Estimated new growth is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That, it is a coincidence that that's the same? It's, you know, not always the same. General override, that brings the levy limit to ninety-two point eight. This is an interesting thing. The exempt debt you can see here is dramatically higher for FY twenty-four than it was in the prior years.
Is that too much?
And
It's fine.
It's good.
Yeah, thanks. And, yeah, like the security person in May was like, what's going on? So the exempt debt is quite a bit higher here because we've issued the bond for Hamlet Deerfield.
It's the new school.
Yeah, yeah, so taxes are going up right there, right? And so when you put in the exempt debt, the, the levy capacity is ninety-seven point one. And so, oops, this is really annoying. And so of course, at this stage in the budget process, we don't know these things yet because we're still developing the budget, right? So we don't know what it is that's going to happen. Okay, so why is this important? I mean, in Westwood, what this does is it kind of tells us year over year what the town can afford in terms of an increase, right? And, you know, when, when most of your revenue is coming from property taxes, that, it doesn't change much from year to year, right? The budget picture. And so, you know, you've kind of got this two and a half, and then you've got the new, new growth, which is like about another percent typically.
And the estimate is more like point six percent.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And so, so we kind of know in Westwood, you know, the folks on the town would say like, we can kind of come in at three. As you know, I have always interpreted three to be three-ish. I think that if I meant three point five, that's three, right? So we, we kind of work within like the reality of that. And so, I don't know why I was circling these. I guess I was going to animate as I explained. Here we go. So if we look at the past budget increases, this is just operating, if we look at our operating budget increases over time, you can see that that's pretty much, you know, where we have, have come in over time. Now, when you look at the chart though, and there are a couple of years that really leap out, right? FY sixteen and FY seventeen, we got these really big increases. That's because there was really significant new growth in FY sixteen and FY seventeen because that's when the businesses at University Station was coming in. So like when wagons arrived, right? And so that kind of economic growth for a town like Westwood is like huge compared to what is typical. So that brings me to this, right? The impact of significant new growth, University Station. So what about it? Does it provide significant revenue? Yes, is the answer for that, right? The commercial tax revenue that's generated from the businesses at University Station provides a lot of revenue to the town and by extension to us. We're living on it, to be clear. The additional annual tax revenue from University Station to the town is about six point six million dollars, right? So that was like additional tax revenue as a result of that project. And so every year, it's like six point six million more, right? Year after year after year, you get that annually. I want to clarify that, that if you think of it as a net increase, it's really only about three million because there is this additional tax revenue. But University Station, commercial development of that scope in a town the size of Westwood, came with a lot of additional expenses, right? Fire, police. And so, you know, a lot of growth happened on the staffing side to account for that situation. But, you know, as the businesses at University Station came online about eight years ago, that new growth was added into the calculation of the town's levy limit. And so this is really important, and I, I want to try to say this clearly because I can't even tell you how many residents have asked me questions about this. I always try to explain it, that the additional revenue raised from University Station is already included in our budget, thankfully, right? It is already included in our budget. So we got that, those big increases. The money is there and it's baked into the base, right? So it's, it's like millions of dollars that is paying for the salaries of, you know, folks who are here. And that same money will pay for those same salaries and will pay for the same salaries year after year. But University Station no longer provides significant additional new growth, right? It's kind of built out at this point. And so University Station doesn't provide for increases. We're living on it. Without it, we would be in very big trouble, but it doesn't allow us to increase. So, you know, I'm just highlighting here, like there were the two big increases, right? That was great because it goes into the base. And the other thing, of course, is that we had these big increases in FY sixteen, FY seventeen. And now we're back to sort of the steady Eddie, like, you know, around three. But suddenly that steady Eddie percentage is a percentage of a much higher number, right? So we're moving up at a faster rate than we would have. And so I did sort of just like, you know, in a, you know, thought experiment and said, all right, let me calculate it back out. And so I said, well, what if in FY fifteen or FY, FY sixteen, we hadn't had that big infusion of new growth from Westwood Station? And we'd just gotten like a regular old three point five percent increase? What would have happened? And here's what would have happened, right? It impacts the trajectory of everything. And so here we are, right? We had like about a fifty-two million dollar operating budget last year. If those increases hadn't happened and we had just sort of stuck with typical, then we'd be here. We'd be like about four million dollars less in our operating budget. And four million dollars, I mean, that's, that's like conservatively forty positions, right? Or if I calculate that differently, that would be like, employees in Westwood would be paid eleven percent less than they are now. I mean, that was a really important thing for the, for the district, right? It is the district that it is today because of that, that economic development. And so that's really good news. And, you know, the, the not so great news is, is that economic development of that scope isn't going to happen again in Westwood, right? I mean, realistically, there's no place to put it, right? So that was a really important project for the town. And I commend the people who worked for years and years to get that through because I think Westwood is the district it is today because of that, right? And if you think about what's happened over the last several years, we've just, you know, we've been able to add a lot of things. Specialists, mental health, sports, additional counselors because of that. Okay, so that's the word on University Station. I'm going to pause here for a second. That was my tax revenue bucket, and I'm going to move into the next bucket. But I want to like do the, do the check. We'd say comprehension check, just see where we are. Is everybody good? Any questions? Okay, now I'll keep going. All right, so restricted variable or one-time revenue. So what about grants, offsets, revolving funds, and reserve accounts? So our operating budget in the schools is based, is built on multiple funding sources, right? Now I'm freezing. Great, thank you. All right. Somebody's taking charge. Yeah.
Thanks, Tony.
So there, these are external funds that are restricted for specific purposes, and they're, and they're, they're often really variable. By what I mean, what I mean by that is, like, they're hard to predict from year to year, and they change a lot, and, you know, they're, they're just sort of, they're, they're more puzzling to deal with than tax revenue, which is a pretty clear picture, okay? So these grants and revolving funds provide what we call offsets to our operating budget, and they fund a fraction of the operating costs in specific categories, right? So an offset means if we said, well, our transportation line item is about order of magnitude.
Like one point five million?
One point five million. That's in the operating budget, and we collect bus fees from people, and I don't know how much we collect.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, that's why I have money, right? So the two hundred thousand dollars in our budget, you see it in a column. It's an offset that it's sort of like, here's how much we need, and then it's like this negative number that's an offset to try to pay for part of our transportation costs, right? So offsets are really helpful. And they're also really scary because if you're not careful, you end up with like a structural deficit. If the off, if the funding source goes away, you have a hole that you have to fill in, right? Okay, so, but here are some of the things that we look at. So we have user fees. We have bus fees for the bus contracts. And I should mention, the thing about these, so they, they go into what's called a revolving account, right? Money in, money out. So we collect bus fees, and we are only legally permitted to use that revenue for that source. Bus fees can pay for transportation, period. Can't pay for anything else, okay? We collect athletic fees. Again, fraction of our athletic program can only be used for athletics. We charge tuition at our preschool. The preschool tuition can be used to fund salary positions, right? Again, it's a fraction of the actual cost of running the program. Okay, then we have other grants. So IDA, Individual Disabilities Education Act. So that is a federal grant that we're able to use for special education costs, right? How much do we get from IDA?
It's about eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand, right? I'm trying to give you like order of magnitude scope here, okay? Less than ten percent, okay? Circuit breaker, which we just talked about, that's like we get things reimbursed to us. And so we can kind of, we have to like outlay the cash in a given fiscal year, but then we get a reimbursement paid in arrears. And we can apply that as an offset to that fiscal year's special education budget. Okay, and then we do have some other things. So we have a special education reserve account. It's like our savings account for special education, okay? Clearly, it can only be used for special education. And we have that in our back pocket to fund unanticipated special education costs, right? When, and, and that can happen in special education. Student needs change from year to year. And so if there's something that's really unanticipated and that we didn't budget for, we can go to that reserve. That reserve account has been funded a couple of times by one-time contributions where we put an article on the town meeting warrant, and we have asked residents effectively to fill up our special ed reserve. Like, could you put some money into special ed reserve, right? In addition to that, there are a lot of people in the district who work really hard for us to submit for Medicaid reimbursement for services that we provide in the school district. All of our Medicaid reimbursement, we put into that special education reserve. That's how we sort of keep increasing it, right? So our special education reserve at this point is nine hundred and some thousand dollars, which is like healthy. I just told you, we had four unexpected tuitions move in, right? And we have to figure out a way to land the fiscal year, not in a deficit. And so we'll be using special ed reserve funds, right? And that's great that we have a way to do that in this operating budget in this fiscal year. But those tuitions, those tuitions don't just have to be paid this year. They have to be paid next year and the next year and the next year over the life of the student's education, right? And so we can like plug a hole one time, but then we have to budget for them because that special ed reserve at nine hundred thousand dollars would be depleted like really fast, right? And it's taken us ten years to get our special ed reserve account to that, right? So you, I mean, much like my savings account, you know, the, the rate at which I'm saving, I cannot really replenish it all that fast, right? Okay, and then I like to put this here. We do try to be creative. And so, you know, we've put solar panels on our roofs. Some people may not know, we have a solar farm in Boober, the Westwood Public Schools. And so we actually generate income through those solar projects. And we can use that to partially fund our utility costs. And it's finally getting to the point where we can get a handle on like what we can rely on. And it's like helpful to have that, that revenue. It's not going to fund the operating budget, but it's, it's really helpful revenue. Okay, so those are a lot of the different pieces, and they're like different levers that we can pull, right? And, and so that's why I put them up here, because I think we have to make some decisions about funding sources and how we're going to use them. These are all tricky. They're all tricky because you don't really know from year to year what some of these things are going to be, right? So circuit breaker is a, a great example of that. We can say, well, how much should the circuit breaker offset be? Like, what do we think is realistic? And so the conversations that we have in central office all the time, we, we just call that the risk proposition, right? Like, we're putting the numbers up there and we say, is it three hundred thousand? Is it four hundred thousand? Is it five hundred thousand? And we have to come up with a number that we think is realistic, that we think we could dig out of if we're wrong, and that will allow Lenny to sleep at night, right? So we've got to kind of, we've got to think about all of those things, and it's, it's like hard to know sometimes what they're going to be. Okay, so moving on to another kind of, this is an example of one-time funding. So ESER funding, quote, federal COVID relief, right? So I saw this headline the other day in Commonwealth Magazine. It was an opinion piece, and it said, Massachusetts public schools are flush with cash. And believe me, I clicked on that. It's like, really? Where do I get this money? And so, you know, I, I won't go into what the, the person's point was, but it really was like there, there was an infusion of ESER funding. And it is true that some districts got millions and millions of dollars in ESER funding. ESER funding, the allocation was tied to the Title I formula, and Title I is federal relief, or federal grant to districts with high numbers of low-income students. Westwood does not receive Title I, right? So when we got our ESER funding, it wasn't that much money. There have been three phases of ESER. So ESER I, so that would have been our, our hybrid year. We got twenty thousand dollars. So I mean, that might as well have been zero, to tell you the truth, right? I mean, not quite, but pretty much.
We used it for some technology.
We used it for some technology? Okay.
It's something.
It wasn't nothing, but not much. ESER II, we got a little more. We got eighty-five thousand dollars, right? ESER I and ESER II for Westwood is like very much in the review mirror. That is one-time money. It's spent and it's gone. ESER III, we got a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And so we had a lot of conversation about how to use that money. And we had gotten a lot of input from principals and from teachers. They had concerns about a need for increased mental health supports for, at the elementary level in particular. And so we thought about it, and we decided that we would add some elementary adjustment counselors at the elementary level, and we would fund it using the ESER funding. We took half of the money, and we applied it to this year to hire those positions. And we're saving the other half of the money because in this case, we have until December twenty twenty-four to spend it. And we're saving it so that we can fund those positions again in FY twenty-four, right? We did this because we were thinking of this as a stabilization response to things that had happened during COVID, right? I would never normally say that we should fund positions with one-time funding sources because after next year, that money is gone, right? We've spent it and it's gone, and it's not going to be replenished. And so at that point, the decision will be, do you keep those positions and somehow try to fund them and not fund something else? Do you get rid of some other positions so that you can keep that? Or do you just get rid of the positions, right? And we knew that when we made this choice. It just seemed really important. And so we know that in FY twenty-five, that's something that we're going to have to think about. And by the way, the people who are in those positions know that as well and knew it before they took the jobs, right? So we would never not be clear about that. So I put this up here because I thought it was also interesting. I just took like our immediate neighbors, right? So that you can see how different the funding was. And, you know, I, I don't quibble about that because the funding is based on like who's in the classrooms and what those needs might be. But this is the reality of what our share was in Westwood. Okay. So last topic. I want to talk about Westwood's approach to operating versus capital budgets. And I say this because this is another thing, people say a lot of things to me that I think not quite right, right? So I want to make sure that we're clear on this. Okay, so our operating budget. The operating budget is the annual appropriation of funds for ongoing expensive salaries, benefits, supplies. These are things that you will pay for this year, next year, and that year, right? That's the operating budget. So operating budgets, because they have to be ongoing and funded in perpetuity, are funded from ongoing revenue sources such as property tax revenue in Chapter Seventy, right? That's how we build our operating budget. Our operating budget is not funded through one-time funding sources. Why? Because it would be really stupid, right? It, doing so creates a structural deficit in the budget, right? I could say, you know what? I really want to, you know, increase salaries by this amount, and it's, I don't know what. Like, pick your number, three hundred thousand dollars. And I could come up with three hundred thousand dollars, but it's not three hundred thousand dollars. It's three hundred thousand dollars next year and the year after that, and the year after that, and the year after that, right? So it has to be some kind of sustainable, when we say sustainable, a sustainable source. So that's the operating budget. Capital, on the other hand, is different, right? So these are expenditures for capital or fixed assets improvement. This is like we need to buy equipment or technology or furniture. We need to do an HVAC project. We need to repair our roofs. Those are things that you do, you pay for them once and you're done. And then there's something else that you need to pay for once, and you'll be done with that, right? Our annual capital budget in Westwood is about one million dollars. And I say that to explain to people the order of magnitude difference between an operating budget and a capital budget. We have fifty-two million dollars in the operating budget and one million dollars in the capital budget, right? And I think sometimes people see us buying iPads and they think, you know, that's, it's really different. And I think sometimes people see us buying iPads and they think, you know, that's, it's really different scope, okay? The annual capital budget about the one million, that's still funded through tax revenue because we're going to do that year after year, right? Like we're always going to have things that we have to do. Our buildings, we have seven buildings, they're a major investment for the town and we have to take care of those assets. In Westwood, and we're fortunate in this way, town meeting often approves funding for our capital projects, projects that exceed the capacity of a one-million-dollar budget through one-time or uncertain sources such as free cash or the hotel meals tax, right? And that is, that's something that Lemon and I have come to rely on, that we can go to people at town hall and say, we have a couple of specific needs. They are outside of the scope of our budget. Is there another way that we can fund those one-time? So I thought I'd show you here five years of annual capital budgets. This is also important. You can see that in FY twenty, we kind of got like a boost here. But cap, the capital budget is typically level-funded. Lemon always submits for more, but it's pretty much level-funded. And so what we do is that we just sort of back into these numbers. We, we portion out the one-point-one million into different categories. Notably, what I think is important and what's distinct here about the capital budget. So the operating budget, we are not requi, we are not permitted to run a deficit in schools, right? On June thirtieth, whatever allocation you were given by town meeting, you cannot have overspent. On the flip side, you also can't save, right? So there's sort of no incentive to saying like, let's be really frugal. Let's see if we can save it up, we could spend it next year. On June thirtieth, if we have money that was, that was in our budget that isn't spent, we have to turn it back, right? The Western Public Schools is not in the habit of turning back money, just to be clear. And so Lemon, Lemon, last year, in a fifty-two-million-dollar budget, turned back five thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
Can't get much closer than that. I mean, I look at that and I say, Lemon, she landed the airplane on the aircraft carrier in the middle of the ocean, right? And I don't know how she did it because you can see the complexities, right? All the moving parts, we create a budget and then things don't go that way, right? We budget for things, people take medical leaves, the boiler breaks. And we don't have another pot of money that we can say, shoot, the boiler broke. Let's go to a pot of money over there that we just, you know, have no use for. What we do is we have an allocation and we solve problems. We say, shoot, we're way over here, so we've got to adjust something else, right? Though, that's like the game that we're playing all the time, okay? But back to the capital budget. The good news is, is that in the capital budget, you are allowed to save. And so, you know, Steve Valet, our Director of Technology, he has a long-range plan. He knows when the laptops, the life of them, and when they're going to have to be refreshed, all that. And when there are major projects coming. And so he spends his money and he saves it from year to year, right? Roofing is another area where like we are constantly assessing the state of our roofs. That's important for safety. And we know that we're going to have roofing projects and we can project out when they're going to be, right? And they're really expensive. And so the annual roofing allotment would not let you do a roofing project. And so instead, we sock it away so that when the time comes for the roofing project, we still won't have enough money, but at least we can say to residents, we've been saving for this and we have this amount that we can put towards it. And now we need to ask you for some additional capital, right? So we do think in like a long-range way when we think about capital. Having said that, a million dollars isn't enough to, to really do all the things that we need to do in, in terms of our, our capital needs. And so, as I said, we sometimes have to come at it a different way. So what about capital needs that exceed the capacity of the annual capital budget? So in Westwood, those items are voted as additional capital articles at town meeting. And they're often funded through a combination of free cash, which is a, a really silly Massachusetts term, right? But it's like, because cash is not free, but it's, you know, cash, cash on hand that you have for this purpose, or the meals and hotel tax. The meals and hotel tax is something that residents in Westwood decided to do in twenty fourteen. Basically, since two thousand nine, there's been an option for municipalities in Westwood, in, in Massachusetts to implement a local tax. So when you go out to a restaurant in Westwood, in addition to the typical state tax, there's another little fraction that you pay and that fraction is, goes to the local coffers. So town meeting adopted that in Westwood. When they did that, so residents voted to put revenue that's generated from the meals and hotel tax into a separate special-purpose fund. So the money goes to a certain place. It is restricted funding. The financial policies of the town are that meals and hotel taxes are never applied to operating budgets. Why? Because it's not a reliable source. You know what happened to the meals and hotel tax during COVID, right? If we had built our operating budget on meals and hotel tax, we would have been up a particular creek without a paddle, right? So that is restricted funding and it's not used for operating budgets. In addition, what, the way that residents set this up is that all of this funding in the special-purpose fund requires a two-thirds vote by residents at town meeting. So what we do is when we have these additional capital needs, we put an article on at town meeting and we go to the residents and we say, this might be a good use for these funds, right? And you know what? The residents of Westwood have supported us again and again with these things. So examples of items that have been funded in this manner in the recent past. We've done major HVAC projects at Westwood High School, we've done major HVAC projects at Thurston. They've been funded this way. We replaced the high school turf field, it was funded that way. And now, the next thing that we have coming up here is the network upgrade. So that really brings it, we actually have two things coming up. So we have two things for this year and you already know these, but I will reiterate them. So the Westwood High School auditorium lighting and dimming system, which it, hard to believe now, but it was constructed in two thousand four, it's not so new anymore. It's reaching the end of its useful life and it's going to require an update in FY twenty-four. You know, we, we are frankly concerned that the lights will go out and that we won't be able to use that space anymore. The estimated cost for that project is four hundred thousand dollars. So when talking to folks on the town side, we have said we would need to include a request to fund that one-time thing at this year's spring town meeting. This is the kind of thing that like we couldn't save for. There's no place to take it from the capital budget that, because those funds already need to be used for other things, right? And so we need to be able to pay for that. And I, I want to be clear that, again, this is funded through one-time revenue. If that is granted to us, we can't take the four hundred thousand dollars and use it for anything else, right? So that's a concern. And secondly, we need to do a district-wide network upgrade. Let's state the obvious, that we are wholly dependent on the internet in schools and everywhere in our lives. And this project is anticipated to cost one-point-one million dollars. The timing of the district network upgrade is partially related to, largely related to the timeline for the opening of Hamlin Deerfield. So it's the district network upgrade and we need it to like work seamlessly across all of our buildings. The project is going to be paid for through a combination of sources. And so last year's town meeting, residents did make an appropriation through that additional capital article of about three hundred thousand dollars, using that meals hotel tax money. We also have another funding source for this. There's something called E-Rate, which is federal funding that's for this specific kind of thing. And it's money that goes to schools and libraries. And so Steve is really on top of that and he will maximize the E-Rate that we get. We also have saved some money in the annual capital budget for that purpose. And unfortunately, the estimate for how much this project is going to cost has gone up by about four hundred thousand dollars since it was originally estimated. That is like the reality of the market that we're dealing with. And so unfortunately, we're going to have to go back to residents to ask them to give us another appropriation to make that happen. So those are sort of the two things outside of the annual capital budget that we're thinking about. Okay, this has been very long and now I'm getting to the actual budget. So I'm back to this slide, which we know. So with all of that as the backdrop, what are we going to do? All right, so. Here's where we are. And these are some of the numbers that we've been looking at in central office. So we're going to start with column B here. Because this is where we calculated what kind of increase we think we actually need to fund level services. Okay, so the first thing that we always do is we say, what will, what will the increase be? What increase do we need to have all of the same people and staff next year that we have this year? That's level services, right? And so, you know, eighty-five percent is salaries. And so we have to look at that. And so if we look at steps and we look person by person, who's on what step? The step increases are four percent, right? So each step is a four percent raise. Then we look at lanes. So there are people who are going to move based on education, right? Accumulating graduate credits. And those people foreshadow for us that they think they're going to make a lane change. And so we calculate the, the cost of the lane changes. And then, in, in this case, I just have to assume a COLA, right? So that's not known at this point. And so that's important because I think sometimes people say like, oh, well, if the COLA is, you know, whatever, two and a half percent, then that would be a two and a half percent increase in salaries. And that's not true because you've got steps and lanes and then the COLA, right? So, so for all of our bargaining units, taking known and unknown and making some assumptions, the level services increase next year is one-point-eight-eight million dollars.
And that's just to keep everything the way it was this year?
Is to keep it all the way, yes, to keep it the same, same next year as this year, okay? And so then we have to go on to non-salary. And this is like a big pressure point this year, right? So we have to look at known inflationary increases, increases and other fixed increases. So that, the special ed tuitions that we talked about, that's the transportation contracts, that's fuel. And, you know, it's other things like online subscriptions that we use in classrooms, like they keep going up, right? So we have to look at those kinds of things. So we looked at known increases and that's about another one-point-three million dollars, okay?
Is that higher than, that's clearly higher than prior years?
Dramatically.
To what mag, magnitude?
Oh.
Oh.
I mean.
And what's that line item normal?
It might have, maybe by nine hundred thousand higher. I mean significantly higher because just the OSD increase is like three hundred, what Emily cited. We've got fuel, we've got subscriptions, we've got transportation, which is a very big contract. And we have a seven percent increase there.
Yeah, so that's a, so that's a big increase. Our cost center leaders, you know, department chairs and whatnot have, and principals have put in other requests, right? They've put in some other non-salary requests. And some of them are really like core. So, you know, we just completed a social studies curriculum review. And so the high school would like to do an adoption of new textbooks. Fourty thousand dollars, right? The state has told us we have to provide transportation to anyone who would benefit from it for ESY. It's like a major shift, I'm not going to go into that now, some translation services, things like that. So that's a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, okay? And then we've sort of thought about staffing requests. And you know, in a normal year, we would have like a very long list of things that we would put here. But what we've done tonight is, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about this. And there are two things that we really think we need to do. So this will be the third budget cycle that we've talked about adding another special education teacher in the peer program, third year. And we haven't been able to do it the last two years. And the program is a decide, it is, it's, it's at capacity. We, we really need to do something for that program. We need to split it.
But you just defined peer again for what?
Yeah, so that, that's a specialized, a district-wide specialized program that we have. It's currently at the Downey School and it's for students who have a diagnosis on the autism spectrum disorder. So we, so we think we need that, that's a very high priority for us. And, and so instead of thinking of sort of like an addition and reduction, I'm thinking of this as a reallocation. And so we've looked out there and we have identified one general education teacher position that we think we could reduce and basically reallocate it, right? So it's like cost neutral. And then we think that we need to add this one-point, I said nurse substitute. I guess, you know, floating nurse might be a better term for that. We actually have already added that for this year. It's something that, you know, we heard a lot from nurses about this need. And, you know, the, the, the pool for daily nurse substitutes is like very, very low. And, and there's a real desire to get back to things like having field trips and, you know, whatnot. And so we, we added that this year. And the way that we did that is that we actually had an unfilled world language physician at the high school. And that was just because when kids elective choices came in, we realized that we were able to like do some things based on what they chose. And so we didn't fill that position and instead we have this nurse substitute, right? And so we want to keep that. So we would sort of codify the reduction in the world language position and like put in nurse. So that would be our, our recommendation.
Emily, can I add one thing?
Yeah.
To Maya's question. Your question about the one-point-three million in known inflationary increases, I was thinking about like what makes up that number? And it is the inflation costs, like the OSD cost, fuel cost. But in addition, what's embedded in there are the move-ins. So remember Emily said we have to pay for those with reserve this year, right? But we have to start budgeting for them properly through the operating budget because the special ed reserve is not a mechanism for paying ongoing costs. So that's what's in that number too.
Will deplete in, I mean, two years.
Yeah, a significant hit will be taken this year because the cost is almost seven hundred thousand between the tuitions and the transportation.
Yeah, and I just want to say, it, it always makes me a little uncomfortable when we talk with this specificity about things like this. Just to be clear, the Western Public Schools welcomes all children and is committed to meeting their needs, right? So fair enough. So when we, when we do that math, right? We said, okay, that's, that's sort of the cost side, right? But let's also look at some of those external revenue sources. So this is where we have to like make some assumption. And so we think that we can increase our circuit breaker offset assumption by four hundred thousand dollars. They increased the rate at which transportation's reimbursed this year. So that was like a single piece of unexpected good news, right? And all of this. And we've really looked very carefully at what we think is going to be eligible for circuit breaker. And we think we can do that. And this is the kind of thing that we would like to talk to the school committee about because, I don't know, that number might be bigger, that would be a higher risk. We have to choose, you know, we had it lower and we decided to make it bigger already, right?
So before getting to these numbers, the four thirty-three, six ninety-eight, that's without these external revenue sources, that's, we are over budget even at five point.
Well, so at this point is not the cost, like this is what the cost is, right? So we, we need another, yes, we're, we're sort of building our way to what we need. And here we're saying like, can we get that number down? And so we're saying increase our revenue here. We think we can increase our offset by, for the IDA and from solar by about forty thousand dollars. And so here's what we're saying, and I should have said this. When we did the numbers, we said, okay, to get to this number, so that's like balanced, right? How big an increase is that on the operating budget year-over-year from last year? And it's a five-point-six-five percent, right? And we haven't seen five-point-six-five percent increase since the university station new growth, right? Because things were really different that year. And so that's a lot higher than the three and a half. But we just wanted to show that that's what it is, right? So we've, in consultation with principals and everything, we've, we've sort of said, what would a budget look like if we just sort of like put it on the table and said, these are the increases? And we would have to propose a budget that is a five-point-six-five percent increase.
And you're comfortable with the assumptions you made under the external revenue sources?
Am I comfortable?
With this one, yeah, it's pretty simple.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so, so then we kind of said, all right, well, what if it weren't five-point-six-five percent? What if it were five percent, right? Five percent, you get an additional two and a half million, right? And so we just sort of built the same thing. And at five percent, we still would have to figure out a way to accommodate three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
We're three thirty over.
Right, and then you say, well, what about four and a half percent? Just to like understand like what our parameters are. And then you're at like nearly six hundred thousand and four percent, we were at eight forty-seven. And so I didn't even go to three and a half, right? Because that's just like not where we are. And so the budget process. And so, the budget process, and this is like, we've got a month, right? We sort of have to figure out where do we wanna come in? And how do we wanna think about that?
And we have not had budget steering with the town.
We're about to, yeah. And I've been having conversations, right? So, this won't come as a surprise, I don't think. So, we're, so this is just like, this is the challenge, right? This is the process that we have to think about that. And, um, so, I wanna put out just like a couple of things for consideration here. So, you know, one thing that you can do is you can try to raise additional revenue. And so, um, we have sort of like one proposal here, which is, we're calling it the tier-one user fee increase. And so, the bus fee when it was implemented is a hundred and eighty dollars and it's still a hundred and eighty dollars.
When was it implemented?
Oh, twenty years ago, I don't even know, maybe not that long. I think that was Paul Ash, I don't know, um, who implemented it. And so, we could increase that bus fee from a hundred and eighty to two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And so, I did, I gathered information about bus fees.
Oh, my God.
And so.
Why are A's at the bottom?
Redfield's B.
Yeah, so these are the tech districts. So, there are three districts that don't have a bus fee, right? And I have to say, like, if you don't have to live on these kinds of things, these offsets, that's a good way to live, right? Because this is unpredictable. Like, we don't know how many people are gonna take the bus. There's a family cap. We don't know if there're gonna be brothers and sisters, right? We don't know exactly how much the money's gonna be. And, but you can see the fees here and we're like clearly low. Of the districts that have fees, we're low, right? And we have family caps and all this. Now, I will point out that here, in a couple of districts, the fee doesn't apply to everyone. They make it free for elementary, right? So, there's, there's some variation here. But we looked at that and, um, you know, and I say this knowing that this impacts families. But, um, I think that my recommendation would be that it is time to increase, oops, I'm on the wrong thing, it is time to increase the fees. And so, if we raised the bus fee to two twenty-five, I did a similar, um, look at athletic fees. And here, we're, you know, not really out of alignment with other districts. And I'll, I linked this on your.
But our cap is lower.
But our cap is lower, but our cap is lower, that's true. So, um, again, we think we could think about raising fees, so.
Cap for the entire year or just during a season? Like, in other words, if I do three sports, is that hits?
It's a cap for a cap.
A year?
For a year.
Yeah, okay.
Right, okay. So, if, if we increased the bus fee from one eighty to two twenty-five and the athletic fee from two fifty to eighty, it's different at the middle school, right? We also think we should increase preschool tuition by three percent. So, you know, if we do that, we would generate another almost hundred thousand dollars that we could then put towards funding level services, right? So, that's one strategy, right? Under certain increases and budget scenarios, that isn't gonna do it, right? But it's, it's sort of like the next hundred thousand dollars. And I would definitely recommend that. I, I, I feel like I have to say, just to be responsible, that in, anytime you increase fees and increase the offset, you are creating, um, a hole in, in the budget, right? And so, if you ever have a day that you want to reduce fees or get rid of them, it's really, really hard. This is what we went through when we eliminated kindergarten tuition, right? And we did that because that was part of our philosophy. But we, three years in a row, we had to put eighty-five thousand dollars into the operating budget to start plugging the hole, right? And so, that was a big commitment and that, and so, we weren't able to do something else. So, I just, I just, you know, wanted to make sure I, I say that, that I don't think you can get rid of the fees once you put them in, or it'd be super hard. We could raise them more, right? Like, that's another way to go. So, we said, well, what if the bus fee were two hundred and seventy? And we raised the cap, or what if we increased athletic fees? And, um, you know, so we could, we could generate more income that way and start shipping away at this. So, those are some of the things that we're thinking about. And so, one thing that I wanna get a sense from the committee about is whether or not you have an appetite for that? And if we should factor something like increasing user fees into the budget at this point?
I say yes.
I'm not as quick of a yes. I mean, I, some of them are so obvious, like the bus fees are really low. But I'm also trying to think about parents and all of us, you know, our everyday costs are going up. Our oil costs more, everything that the district is feeling. So, if we're talking about increasing extended day, bus fees, athletics, and I don't know what else, that could end up being a lot, especially for families that have multiple children.
Right, I, I agree with that. At the same time, if we weren't so low in the market rates.
Yeah.
I would, I mean, we're trying to fund a budget here. We have an unknown, a huge unknown number. We wanted, I think we need to build a strong budget, right? None of us, I just think if these, if these fees were market, I would not feel so strongly. But they're not, right? The bus is not. I just think we need to be realistic. I don't know. I mean, look at these, these numbers are crazy.
The bus numbers are crazy.
Yeah, and they're unknowns here. I mean, if the bus fee goes from a hundred and eighty to two hundred and seventy, then somebody might say, well, I'll drive my kids to school, right? Then it's like worse that we didn't get that revenue, but, um.
And that's where I feel like there's a split. It's like the same thing with extended day. The people who are able to are gonna say, well, I just won't send my kids. And the people who really need it are gonna, you know, like it, same thing with the buses. I don't know, I'm just, I'm not saying I'm totally opposed to it, I'm just not as quick to jump.
Okay.
And we do give bus waiver, just to, I mean.
We do, we absolutely do. We waive the bus fee for families if they, you know.
If they approach us.
They approach us.
Same with all the fees, right? Athletic fees, all of the fees.
Absolutely, we give fee waivers, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, the data would say bus fees is much more convincing. I mean, athletic, we are, I mean, we're a little more closer, we basically are the market, you know? I think looking at the cap might be, is a little bit interesting, um, as well, because, but, you know, I mean, certainly the bus, the data would say. I think people would understand that. And I don't think, I, I think extended days are a little different on, on supply and demand in the bus. I don't know, maybe some people would stop doing the bus if it went up fifty dollars. But I think extended days are a little bit different because it's thousands of dollars, I think, you know? And it's sometimes, for some people, it may be more of a choice, but.
I just think we have a big budget problem, like a big budget problem. And we need to be, we have, we have a duty to build a budget that's realistic for the economy. And as I said, if these were not, if these were market, I would be less gung ho about it, but they're not.
Well, it was just like athletics is mar- so, I just think, we should be consistent, we should be consistent on our, on our argument if it's.
I mean, athletics, though, we're not, what are we, athletic would still be within range, right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's just, it's fine, I mean, it's fine, I'm just saying, just, we should just be consistent on what a region is.
But I agree, I agree, we should look at, but like, the bus fee to me is a no-brainer, right?
When was the last time the preschool tuition was raised, do you know?
A couple of years ago, I mean, we raised that.
Yeah, it wasn't a big raise, but it was kind of a normalization. We, we, there was some quirks in the tuition that made it really hard to calculate. And it was arbitrarily higher for some classrooms than for others. So, we, we stabilized that and there was a small increase as part of that. So, the increase was kind of commensurate with the three percent. I don't have the numbers now, but it was along those lines.
I think a three percent tuition increase is very reasonable, you know, that seems.
That seems reasonable.
Yes.
I think they're, you know, very reasonable considering the situation we're in, you know, we're.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna go back and over the next several weeks, we're gonna be thinking about this. And so, you know, I said I would definitely say tier-one. Maybe we're looking at tier-two as well at this point. And so, it's first, you know, are we interested in going this way? And secondly, are we, you know, to what scope?
Because the, um, the other big unknown is how much we're actually gonna get, right? Like, we're looking at five point six five, five percent, four point five. Those are numbers, as you said, we haven't seen in almost ten years.
Yeah, I'm gonna look back to that in a second.
Yeah, I did want to say, sure.
So, I'm just thinking about this, like, from a strategy perspective, right? I mean, this is a way that we can increase revenue. And I say that because like the, the other option is to identify reductions, right? And so, I'm trying to think about.
Well, that's what I'm trying to avoid, right?
Yeah, so I'm trying to think it, well, yes. And so, I'm, I'm trying to think about ways that we can, you know, shore up some things first on the revenue side before we think about that. So, um, yeah, so that's, that's where we are. And so, yes, the, the other thing that I just need to get kind of a general sense about is, you know, and, and we often ha- like, there's a high number here. And I will say, we, we some, you know, we've seen things before where the, the wish list is always much higher than we can do and we kind of whittle things down. It's just that, you know, it's a much leaner request list this year. Because we knew that we were in a tough situation, right? So, I need to think about, um, like, where the school committee would like me to come in in terms of the budget that I'm developing, right? And, um, that will help us identify what we have to do. And we, we, we're already doing the work, right? At administrative council, we've already talked about, well, like, how would we approach trying to make up some of these numbers? And so, we, we have some ideas. You know, none of them are great, right? And the further, I'll be honest, the further you go, the more painful they are, right? And so, we, we are trying not to, to go that far. We do need to have budget steering. And so, that could be, obviously, that has to be part of the conversation, right? We, we do have some ideas that we can talk with about the town. You know, one strategy is that we might be able to identify some things in here in the operating budget. You know, like the textbooks, right? The textbooks maybe don't need to be in the operating budget, that could be a one-time expense. So, if we could identify some things like that, that we could strip out of the budget and basically say, is there like a one-time revenue source that could be used to pay for that thing? Then we, we could do that. So, those are the kinds of things we've talked about at budget steering. And we might be able to get the number down in some way. I should've mentioned this too, there, there are two other big issues here. And we've decided that these, similarly to what I just said, have to be funded in a different way. So, McKinney-Vento, that's the law that has to do with students who are homeless. So, we, um, we have a separate account, but the account has been depleted. Basically, there are students in Westwood who, who are homeless or who maybe are in foster care and have been placed by DCF with family in Westwood. And so, under McKinney-Vento, they have a right to continue to attend school in the district that they last resided in. And we have to cost share with that district to provide transportation to that place. So, you know, we have some students that we provide transportation to other districts. And, um, so, many years ago, the, at town meeting, the town established this fund and did a one-time allocation. We need to do another one-time allocation so that we can pay for that.
We've fully spent it.
We full, yeah, we've, we've fully spent it at this point. So, we need to do that. And then, we've, we've identified a specific tuition that has two more years on it. And so, we thought, well, let's pull that out, pay for that tuition, not by increasing the operating budget, but, you know, using some one-time funding. So, those are not factored into these increases. We're saying that that's how we're gonna approach it at budget steering. So, yeah, so, you know, I need to build the budget. And so, um, you know, I'm trying to figure out where we should be aiming. And, and maybe we need to have some conversations on the town side before we think about that. But, you know, my sense is, we, we're not coming to three and a half, that's for sure.
But we all know basically what you went through before, getting above four is gonna be challenging from the town side, it's my sense, right? I mean.
Yeah, I think it is. I think maybe, I think maybe some strategy about some one-time things.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that that, like, maybe that is how we try to approach it, right? So, I mean, a per- so, a percent increase for us is five hundred thousand dollars, right? Five hundred thousand dollars, so, you know.
Can you scroll down so we see the, the lower, where we budget? Yeah, the balance, that's what I wanna see. I mean, the only way this works is at five point six five. So, the question is, should we ask? I would ask for five point six five, right? I mean, otherwise, we don't have a balanced budget. And this is what we need. Unless the town comes to us and says, well, we're gonna give you four, recognizing we need to find eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of cuts. So, I would, I mean.
So, five point six five is what we would say, this is what we need, right? And, um, yeah, and it, it's interesting because when I think back over the time I've been in Westwood, there are a lot of districts who in January present like eight point something or other percent budget, right? And they know that that's fantasy.
Right, and we don't do.
It's like theater, right? You, you present it and then everybody, you know, wrinks their hands and, you know, eventually, you like put down there. That's never the way that we've operated in Westwood. Like, I mean, honestly, it's a tremendous waste of energy to, to do something that you know is, you know, theater. And if you're gonna land in the same place, right? So, we've just always had like really honest and direct discussions. And we have like a good trusting relationship with people on the town side and we listen to the unions.
The town has been very supportive of the schools.
They've been very supportive of us. And so, you know, we.
Continue to be.
They continue to be. And so, we, we have those conversations and we sort of talk about what's realistic. Having said that, I don't think three and a half is realistic for us this year. And so, I think there has to be another way to come at it. I just don't know what that is necessarily. So, I think we have to talk about it, I mean.
Emily, what are other towns like, uh, are there, are you any awareness? I mean, everybody has to be having the same issues.
Yeah, I mean, sure, everybody definitely is dealing with the same challenges and issues.
Are other towns going for five percent? You know, uh, we're competitive.
Yeah.
On our outstanding educational system.
Yeah.
And this is the beginning of the end. Uh, if it's, uh, other towns are.
Well, I don't, I couldn't report, I wouldn't have a report for all of them, but I can tell you just anecdotally, I was at a conference today with, um, school business officials. The person next to me was saying they were, um, in a very difficult place. Like, the kind of place where they didn't know how to figure it out. And the only way they could try, conceive of is an override, that they didn't wanna go to an override. So, that's the hard part, you, you can't really, it's not something people go to.
You can't, you can't campaign, start campaigning for an override in December.
Yes, it just doesn't work. And then, there was a district that cited their, their grapple with the OSD increase and the fact that for them, that meant a million dollar hole in their budget. So, other districts are, they're all budgeting for that tuition increase. And for some towns, it's more significant than it is for Westwood even. And so, you know, it's just the reality of happens, you know, it's about the district size and the population within it and their approach.
What if we start just working on trying to do a five? And we take a look at what that's like?
Okay.
I mean, and again, I don't know if that is realistic, but I can work on that.
Why not start at the five point six five? Because it, you feel like it'd be kind of like spinning wheels.
Well, so this is the, this, so five point six, this is the five point six five.
So, we have the five point six five.
Right, this is it.
Oh, you mean, I, I think I'm going back to the town with the.
Right.
But how much does that go down if we increase some of the fees? Can you?
Mm-hmm, yeah, exactly. So, so here, five, you, you need to come up with three hundred and thirty thousand, right? So, we said, let's take a hundred there, right? And, and some more there, so now, we're here. That's not too bad, right? Like, we've had to deal with problems of that scope before.
And that's a five.
Yeah.
That's a five.
Right, so you do that.
Do you city value ladder with your patriots doing the same thing you do? Uh, some of them being innovative in these one-time, you know? What are other towns coming up with is a one-time amount for something that.
I think, I mean, I think Emily laid it out in the presentation. So, some of them have the benefit of bigger ESR funding, but that's one-time money. So, they all are very leery of using it, but they have that benefit. So, they're using it more for capital projects, adding a wing to a building that they, you know, needed more expansion. That's the, that's the recommended strategy, even for ESR. Um, there, I won't lie, there are some districts that are using it for staffing and they're leveraging the fact that their chapter seventy money will increase because they are more likely eligible, they're, they have lower income populations. So, they forecast a chapter seventy increase, so they, they patch things together that way. None of that is really available to us as a strategy, so.
We also could model out different scenarios, right? So, we could say, okay, here's five point six, right? We could say if it were five, like, here's how we would approach it. If we were in four point five, this is what we would do. Like, we could start to get specific about what it would mean, right? And what, what the impact is. And, um, and I don't like to do that, like, I, you know, it's like very anxiety-producing to, to start throwing things out there, right? And, and so, I don't really like to operate that way. But we could do that. We could, we could start taking a look at different, at different scenarios.
Yeah, I mean, maybe I'm the, I think, once we have better guidance for me on, from budget steering, plus, I don't, you know, the mechanics of the one-time, I don't, that's, I'll leave it to the experts on that. But if we are coming in at a number that's more on the right than left, we just need to start preparing the community for production and staff. I mean, that's what is gonna happen. So, that, I mean, I'm kinda saying obvious, but.
Yeah.
I think we will just need to, we just need to start thinking about that, if that's where we end up in January. I think we will just need to, we just need to start thinking about that if that's where we end up in January.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's, like, that's the truth of it. And that's, like, the thing that, when you start doing this work, that's what you figure out. If eighty-five percent of your operating budget is salaries, and like there, you know, there aren't enough, like, highlighters you can cut from the budget to get to this kind of money, right? And so, um, yeah, that, I mean, that's what it would mean. We would have to.
I think it'd be valuable as we look at these different scenarios and say, what are we gonna be cutting in to the, to the meat? And what are we cutting into the bone? I mean, there, some of these numbers mean some very drastic things that are happening. And, uh, if enough people understand that, they may create a lot of support with the, uh, select board and others that, you know, this is, don't mess below this. We don't want to go to the bone.
Yeah.
Because some of these are very drastic cuts.
Yeah.
Uh, if that's the only option available.
I mean, that may be true, right? And, I mean, but I know as somebody who has people lobbying me for things, sometimes I'm like, I hear you and I agree with you about the value. I just don't have this thing to give to you, right? And so that may be where, where the select board is, right? I mean, the, the only way for us to have more is for like the municipal side to have less. And, I mean, and they have people who are there too, right? And so we have to think about that.
You know, good people in the town wanting, you know, better fire stations, better police stations, better public work. Because others wanting.
But that's capital, right? I'm, yeah.
Yeah. But, you know, I, I think the one thing I don't want to see cutting into the meat and the bone is education. Maybe public works can put something on for a little while longer. Not that we don't want to support them all, but.
That's still all capital, though.
It's capital, right? So, so we're talking about operating.
It's the operating, this is all, the, all these percentages are of the operating budgets.
Right.
So.
I mean, I'm the school superintendent, Charlie. I'm always gonna advocate for us, right? I, that's what I do. And so you don't have to convince me that, you know, education should be the priority, right? Like, definitely. And I will do that. I, I just, you know, want to think about sort of what's realistic. So, all right, maybe we just have more work to do. We need to start the budget steering. We need to think about it. I think the main idea is that we can't come in at three and a half.
Right, correct.
Right? That's the main idea. It's gonna be higher than that. You know, and, and I, I didn't say, but I feel a responsibility to say it. Like, this is my assumed COLA if I'm off. And that changes all of these numbers.
Right.
Right?
I also think that this is a very lean budget. His compare, I mean, the one eighty-three is.
Well, I just need to show you, this is a level services budget, literally, right? The two things that we're adding, we're doing by reducing.
Right.
We're just reallocating. There is nothing new in this budget. And, you know, that's depressing to think about right now, right?
And we're still like looking at a, can you scroll down again with the fees?
Right.
But this time lower with the fee, with the fee increase.
Yeah.
So if we did tier two.
Yeah.
Maybe we didn't drag that in, but.
I think, I don't think we dragged it. But we are already in a good place here, right?
If you did tier two, you might have two hundred thousand to work with.
Exactly.
With a five point six five.
Are, are you saying could we get more so we could add?
No, no. I'm just looking at five, right?
I had a moment of hope. Okay.
I'm looking at five, though, with the fees.
Five with the fees.
Right. And that, we're still over by one thirty-three, but that seems doable.
That seems doable. That's pretty manageable.
We could do a school committee bake sale.
I mean, we can figure that out. Every year.
That would be one, thank you. That would be one-time funding.
All right, it'd be one-time funding. Yeah, well, we could, like, so I hear Abby whispering over here. Abby always has good ideas. So, so like that, maybe, maybe we just decide to be more risky with circuit breaker.
Yeah. I hate that, though. That gives me anxiety.
I don't know.
If we're wrong.
Yeah.
I guess if we're wrong, we would just have to find more. It makes, makes a problem for the next year.
It makes a problem for the next year. I mean, that's what it is. It just makes a bigger problem for FY twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
And we're thinking FY twenty-five won't be as bad because the fourteen percent should be back down to three.
Oh, I don't know. I have no idea what's gonna happen with that, to be clear.
They can't do fourteen over fourteen.
Well, no.
We were shocked by the fourteen, though.
We were shocked by the fourteen, so. I have no information about that. So I don't know. I don't have, first of all, I don't know what's gonna happen in inflation. But here is one thing I will say about FY twenty-five. FY twenty-five, in the operating budget, the district will have consolidated.
Yes.
And we have a staffing plan for now. And so that's something that we've talked about, right? That we anticipate in FY twenty-five, there may be some savings. I mean, frankly, in the form of reductions, which I hope, uh, I know that makes people nervous. I hope will happen through like normal attrition. People leave, right? And so I don't think we'll be with people. But we could take some staffing reductions in the budget in FY twenty-five. And so we have talked about, should we maybe like take a reduction early and say, well, this, this is something that we have to fund one more time, right? Like, disposition one more time in FY twenty-four, and could we come up with a different source of money for that?
I see.
And, but I want to say, it appears I will not be here in FY twenty-five for the budget development, but I'm conscious that, that I don't want to create a problem for people in the future. That I, I don't think that we should shave that kind of thinking too close because some, something we have not talked about here is turnover. And that's actually really important, right? So in, so we budget for salaries. This is another common misconception. We budget for salaries, and then people retire, people leave, we hire in. And frequently, there's like a turnover savings that people who make more, you know, we hire in less. And we don't budget for turnover because it would be impossible to predict what that number is. It's all over the place from year to year, right? We also don't budget for turnover. It's like new growth. We assume it's gonna happen, and it better happen because what it does is you get turnover, and it's the first thing on the table to start paying for this. Level services, right? And so last year, we actually had a pretty big turnover. It was like four hundred thousand dollars. It was, it was a big number. And so we took that turnover number and we pushed it forward. We, we actually pushed it forward into this, right? We said, well, we want to be able to go into bargaining with a, you know, a strong position to give like a bigger-than-usual COLA. And so we took that four hundred dollars and put it right there, four hundred thousand, right? And so, um, you have to have that turnover to start to get the level services to play it. And in a given year, as we said, we're always like solving problems. And turnover is what you live on in a, in a school budget. So when it's like, oh, we need another IA at whatever, right? Then turnover money is, in that one first year, something that you can use, and then you apply it to the increase going forward. This year, our turnover was negative one hundred and fifty. So not only did we not have that amount to push forward, but it, it's, you know.
Meaning our staff this year are more expensive than our staff last year.
We're paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more in salary than we budgeted. And that's just because, um, it's, it's for a number of reasons, right? But we, we had somebody leave at a pretty high salary, and then we hired at a pretty high salary. It's just the way that it worked out.[1551.08]